Morning, evening, afternoon, etc., depending where you are. Welcome to the 153rd meeting of the Internet Society Board of Trustees. This is the 2020 Annual General Meeting. For the record, all trustees are present and accounted for except for Walid Al-Saykaf, who sent his apologies and to whom we send congratulations because he's celebrating an important family milestone today. According to the Internet Society's bylaws, the terms of the three board officers, the Chair of the Board, the Secretary, and the Treasurer expire at the start of the annual general meeting just a few moments ago. According to the bylaws also, the President opens the AGM, and so I do so now. And if I had had, you know, a gavel shipped to me, I would be banging it right now. The first order of this general meeting is to elect the Board Chair, who will then take over this meeting. Board members will recall that John sent a message to the board list about a month ago asking for expressions of interest in the various officer positions. Only Gonzalo expressed an interest in the office of Board Chair. So first, the question, Gonzalo, are you still willing to serve in that capacity?
Yes.
Excellent. It is now the tradition, of course, to ask if anyone else is interested in running for the Chair position. So is there anyone? Hearing nothing. Gonzalo, do you want to say a few words to the board about your candidacy for Chair?
Yes, thank you, Andrew. So briefly, the focus areas I would like the board to work on for next year are, you know, I have identified six of them and discussed them with the board, which are the Governance Reform Working Group, the CEO Succession Planning Committee, the Revenue Diversification, the handling of, you know, ad hoc funding requests, communication plan, and strengthening ISOC's brand, and community engagement. So I would like, you know, this year, our work at the board level to basically revolve around those six areas. And of course, if I'm elected, an additional area would be to basically start working from the beginning with whoever wants to run as Chair in the future, because my term will expire in one year, so that, you know, we basically do succession planning properly. So not only for the CEO, but for any officer position. So that would be actually one thing that I would stress during the year. I've been doing so by being very explicit, giving background on all the decisions, by basically making everything visible on the mailing list, even though, you know, sometimes it may feel like, you know, I'm spamming too much the mailing list. But that's kind of my intention and my plan for, you know, the future.
Okay, thank you. So now is the time at which the trustees who are going to vote for this can discuss the matter amongst themselves. So what I'm going to do is ask everyone who is not a candidate, or everyone who is not a trustee, rather, and me, to leave the room. So Kevin, if you can tell me when everyone has left the room, and then I will figure out a way to signal you when it's time to reopen. You're muted, Kevin.
Thank you, Andrew. That includes the past trustees as well, too, right?
That's correct. Anyone who is not a trustee sitting in 20 started with this meeting.
Okay.
So Glenn?
I will leave as well.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, and let me just... Okay, I'm gonna have to forcibly remove some people here, just some staff who probably didn't see my notice. And let me lock the room. And pause the recording.
Pinged people from the staff who may be interested as well. To my dollars, there weren't any other people looking in on this. So Gonzalo, I have some feedback from the rest of the trustees to you. So I will provide that. You know, we can do that offline, but there is only one candidate here. So Kevin needs to distribute the ballot links to the trustees, and then he can display the vote results once all the ballots are received. So this is the online voting platform. And Kevin, I think you have configured the electronic ballots?
Yes, just give me a second here.
Okay.
Have we started recording again?
Yes, we are recording.
And we can vote for Dog Catcher again? That's... That's what I've got.
Okay, so you should be able to see a new poll or survey. It says, "Vote for ISOC Board Chair."
I assume we have to refresh our page.
I'm gonna have to reload the page to see if that happens.
Yes, I see it.
I guess this is when we explained to Gonzalo that our new plan to crowdsource the leadership in the future.
On a wiki.
Yeah, it sounds like a great idea.
Ideally on a wiki, so that we can all edit one another.
I don't have all the votes in yet.
Just trying to refresh, I actually have not yet received the link in mine. So you're not seeing a vote from me because I'm not seeing the poll yet. The Dog Catcher one has disappeared, but nothing is replaced. And of course, the instant I said that, it came in.
Oh, good, good. Okay, I have all the votes in. Shall I display the results?
Yes, please.
Eleven votes for Gonzalo Camarillo.
Very surprising.
Great.
So Gonzalo, I am pleased to announce that you have been elected as Chair with no abstentions and 11 votes. And of course, apologies from Walid, who is not here. Thank you very much. You can take over the meeting now, and I'm gonna, I don't know, go have a daiquiri or something.
Oh, yeah, Gonzalo, you can also ask for a recount.
Okay, thanks a lot, and I really appreciate your trust and confidence. And as I said, I mean, this year is especially important, knowing that, you know, a bunch of us will be basically cycling off next year, and we got, you know, five trustees cycling off this time. So in that sense, you know, I intend to, as I said, you know, be as inclusive as possible and get people up to speed, also to explain, you know, what it takes to be a Chair, what is the time commitment, all that, so that, you know, you can basically decide for yourself whether you basically wish to run next year. So that's important. And if any of you want to touch base with me at any point about that or about anything else, you know how to reach me, so.
It's good that you mentioned that, because that was, in fact, one of the pieces of feedback from the trustees, that, you know, people should be prepared to step up next year and should be watching carefully, and people will be relying on you to provide them with the sort of guidance, because there was a very strong message of support from trustees. It was a broad statement of how great people think you are, so good job.
Thank you. And, I mean, and any other feedback, Andrew, we can take it offline, because I also like to hear, you know, negative things as well, or, you know, I mean, things where there's room for improvement, because that has been useful, you know, every year to hear opinions and all that. So thanks a lot. Great, excellent. So welcome, everyone. Andrew already opened the meeting. This is the 153rd board meeting for ISOC. And first of all, well, we already said Walid couldn't make it, but all other trustees are here. And, you know, given the agenda that has been distributed, do we have any declarations of conflict? So George, we talked about this before?
That's right. I have a conflict with PIR, and I'll be recusing myself for those parts of the meeting that deal with PIR.
Okay, thank you, George. So, you know, when, well, I mean, Kevin will let you know how the, basically, the practicality is worked, but basically, we will call you in the same way as I was called in now. Thank you, George. Anything else? Okay, thank you. So given that, we can go to number four, point number four on the agenda, which is the...
Since I'm working for the LLC, if we end up discussing the LLC substantially, I would have to recuse myself from that.
Okay, okay. Thank you, John. That's a good point. I don't think we will, but, you know, we will have Jason present in open session, so that should be completely okay. But if we were to go into executive session, we'll keep that in mind. Thank you, John. Okay, good. Okay, so as I was saying, point number four on the agenda is to basically elect our Treasurer and our Secretary. So we sent, well, John actually, as our current Secretary, sent an email, and we basically gathered expressions of interest. And John was interested in basically, you know, being the Secretary. Can you confirm that that's still the case, John?
I'm still happy to do it.
Okay, excellent. Do we have any other candidates? Willing to run? Okay, hearing on, Kevin, could you please set up a ballot with John and abstain as the two options?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll let you know when it's up.
Yeah, and the protocol is the same as before. You just reload the screen until you don't see the Dog Catcher or the Vote for the Chair. You will see Vote for Secretary, and then you just vote. It takes always a few seconds, and it takes even longer if you are in California.
Okay, it should be up now.
Thank you. Okay. So please, everyone, go and vote.
Still not seeing it.
Give it a minute.
Yeah, I saw it, just...
Yeah, it's, Mike, you have to go back to the Board of Trustee.
Yeah, but...
With the picture at the top.
Yeah, yeah, I see.
Which, by the way, reminds me that... How are we gonna have our board picture? We're not...
I asked Kevin to replace Sean's head.
Yeah, exactly.
And then Hans Peter head.
I think we can just take a screenshot of the Zoom gallery view.
That would work, actually. But those pictures are quite nice, I have to say. Yeah. But last time, we had to photos up in someone. I don't remember who that was.
Well, Mique wasn't at the last meeting, so we never got a picture of her.
Exactly, yeah, yeah, exactly. Now I remember. That's true. Yeah, it's always a challenge, actually.
Is anybody here working on deep fakes? We could do that.
Those are actually very scary.
Okay, I have the results.
Okay, so if you could please project them on the... Okay, so I see John has 11 votes. So he selected unanimously. So thank you, John. So you are our new Secretary.
Thank you. And I would point out that I am also term limited next year, so we should figure out what our succession plan is there.
Yeah, and just to point out, because before, you know, the Secretary actually was not a trustee. So before John actually became the Secretary, a few years back, it was Scott Bratner. Scott Bratner was at some point a trustee, but then he continued being only the Secretary. At that point, we thought that, you know, let's give it a try, you know, let's try to have a Secretary do that to see if it works or not. And, I mean, we can discuss this later, but I think so far, it has been kind of, you know, working very well, at least from my point of view.
Exactly, you know, like, if the next board wants me to stay on, I would consider it. On the other hand, my, I'm guessing we probably have somebody else who's qualified to do it. We don't have to worry about that now.
Right, but my point is like, you know, just, you know, this is one of the officer positions, that it doesn't have to be necessarily a current trustee, just to keep in mind. Thank you, John, and thanks for all the great job you've been doing so far as well, of course. So now, moving on to the election of the Secretary, in the same email that John sent, we gathered expression of interest, and Richard said that he would be willing to continue. Is that still so, Richard?
Happy to, sir.
Okay, thank you, Richard. Do we have any other candidates for Treasurer at this point? Okay, seeing on, Kevin, could you please set up a ballot with Richard and abstention as the two options? Thank you.
Okay, the poll should appear on your pages soon. Okay, I have the results.
If you could please project them. Okay, so I see 11 votes for Richard, and Walid is not with us. So Richard is elected unanimously as our Treasurer. So thanks a lot, Richard, for your willingness to continue serving and the good work you have done in the past as well.
Thanks, Joe, for your confidence. In the spirit of continuity, we've been discussing, I will point out that I am term limited after one more year after next year. So while it's not quite as immediate as the Chair and Secretary positions, folks should be thinking about whether they'd be willing to step into this Treasurer role as well.
Yeah, and the Treasurer role, we have always tried to basically have a good succession plan, because that's a quite important role. So that's good to point it out, so that people start thinking of, you know, what to do and all that. Okay, great, thank you. We are right on schedule, because it's 4:30 UTC, well, one minute too late. Anyway, moving to Agenda Point Number Five, which is to document the resolutions approved by eVote. And as I said all the time, this is not to pass the resolutions, they have already been passed by email, by eVote, but this is just to document them. So John, do you want to say something special about any of the resolutions?
No, there's three resolutions. They're all in the agenda, so, you know, I'll cut up and paste them, and we can move on to the next item.
Okay, good, thank you. Okay. Thank you. So I think I'm actually quite happy that today we can pass resolutions by eVote, because everything becomes much more efficient. So that's actually very good. Okay. So moving on to Point Number Six on the agenda, which is basically, every year, we have the previous board basically document a set of action points that they would like the new board to pick up. And this year, basically, they are, well, they are, you know, summarized in the resolution. I can actually read it, just give me a second. So it's, or maybe, Kevin, can you project that, or otherwise I can read it? Yeah, because that's simpler. Maybe it's a bit too much to read the whole resolution. Yeah, so Point Number Six, exactly there, you know, to support the Governance Reform Working Group, to support the CEO Succession Planning Committee, we just formed that. Determine a high-level strategy for revenue diversification. As we discussed, this is a very important task for the board to think about. And then to continue to support the projects approved as part of the action plan. As you know, we are developing the 2021 Action Plan, but we still need to support the 2020 Action Plan for the remainder of the year. Any questions about these items? Thank you, Kevin. You can go back to the video. Yeah, excellent. Okay, if I don't see any questions, so then I need someone to move. Okay, I see Richard moves, and Olga seconds. We're gonna approve this resolution by show of hands. So I'm gonna be asking for yes, no, and abstentions. Yes, votes, please, raise your hand. And I will ask Maimuna as well. Okay, I see Maimuna, we cannot see you. Or you can write in the chat your vote. No votes? Abstentions? Okay, so Maimuna, what is your vote? I, you are muted.
I support the resolution.
Okay, excellent. So the resolution passes unanimously. Thank you, Maimuna.
Thank you.
Okay, good, excellent. Okay. Moving to Point Number Seven on the agenda, which is to basically recognize the outgoing trustees. And as you know, this year, we had a lot of trustees, basically, leaving the board. It's been five, and they have been Hans Peter, Hiroshi, Glenn, Sean, and Mique. So we have a resolution just thanking them for their efforts. They've been working, all of them, very hard, and they have, you know, given a lot of their time to ISOC. So it's always, you know, sad to see them go, but it's also good to see, you know, the new trustees coming. So that's, you know, the way it works. Any comments before we pass the resolution? Okay, so I need someone to move. Ted moves, Richard seconds, and we will pass this resolution by acclamation. So for the recording, if the only one unmuted is me, you know, the clapping doesn't sound so well. So next time, be ready to unmute and clap. Okay.
We can have Kevin add the recording data.
Yeah, exactly. Make sure you add it.
Add sound effects to my chat.
Let's check.
We're gonna have fake acclamation.
Exactly. And seriously, though, as I have said many times, I don't want to sound as a broken record, but, I mean, like, as I said, incoming trustees, you have, you know, big shoes to fill. You know, I mean, these guys have been working a lot, and they have created a lot of value for ISOC. Okay, good. So with that, that concludes this section of the agenda. And now, we will be moving after the break to the reports. So we will be getting, you know, the IAB report, the IPF chairs, etc. But those are fixing time, so we will take our coffee break and then be back with that. So please be back in 20 minutes at 5:20. We will be started on the hour, but, you know, just not to delay things.
But it's in the same Zoom, right, not in the other one?
Yes, same Zoom.
It's open.
I'm just gonna keep it open and mute everybody.
Exactly. We'll see you in 20 minutes. Please.
Yep, we're recording now.
Okay, so welcome back. Now we're gonna have one and a half hour block of presentations from our, you know, friends, our sister organizations, and I think that's gonna be quite interesting. So we will start with the IAB report that Media will give. And I think this is especially good, since we have so many new trustees. Most of the chairs, they were available this time to basically, you know, present online. Sometimes they send written reports instead. I think it's a good chance for new trustees also to get to, at least, you know, meet virtually all those chairs. So Media, without further ado, please, go ahead.
Okay, so I'm sharing again. Hi, so my name is Mia Kudimint. I'm the IB Chair. And as Gonzalo said, there are a bunch of new members. There are also a bunch of known faces, so I think they know very well what the IB is. But I want to quickly just like explain what the IAB is before I tell you what updates we have. So the IB is one of three leadership groups we have in the IETF. The other one is the ISG and the LSC Board. And while the LSC Board is more on the legal side and financial side, it's really the IAB and the ISG, which share some responsibilities and leadership. The ISG is really focusing on the process, keep the RCs running, basically. And the IAB has some, a couple of more administrative tasks, like selection and confirmation of certain position appointees, external liaisons. We also have oversight over Ayenna. For example, we are kind of the contact point to ISOC. And of course, there's this big A, right, for architecture, and we have architecture oversight, and that's sometimes something that's like a little bit abstract to people. But what we do more concretely is we organize our own work, our architecture work and programs, and we try to figure out topics which we see are missing in the IETF, where like, missing piece is where dots need to be connected, or where we see that an upcoming topic didn't get enough discussion in the IETF. So we try to flag those topics. We organize workshops to do that. We write also RCs on our own stream, and those are informational, and they're usually guidance, for example, on protocol design, lessons learned, or also our few, you know, involving topics which we think are important. And we usually also have to get new work and boss into the IETF. So that's kind of our responsibilities here. I also brought you this slide, so you have some faces and names. So we are 12 community members, or 12 community members, which have been selected by the NOMCOM, plus Alyssa as the IETF Chair, who is also a member of the IAB. And I myself then am selected from the IAB members as a Chair for one year. As you can see, it's like, it's kind of a nice mix this time from industry, some university people. We try to also cover different expertise usually in the IAB. And the kind of special thing this year, which probably, or hopefully, is an advantage, but is sometimes also a challenge, is that this term, actually, all, or all six positions have been filled with new people. So it's kind of half of the IAB is new since March, including myself. I was, before March, I was an area director in the transport area. So I was a member of the ISG, and I was already the IB leader, so having some insights in the IAB, but I'm basically a new IAB member here. Okay, so the official report we sent every meeting has been uploaded to the proceedings of the meeting, and I think Kevin already shared the link with you. So in that report, you can find, you know, procedural information about things like appeals, appointments, also new programs, workshop. We have organized all these kinds of information. And there was also a new thing, this meeting, which we called IB Open Meeting, which was a meeting we have to engage stronger with the community and share more information with the community. And then more on the architectural side, I thought I include a couple of topics. We had a quite nice, actually, virtual retreat in June. And the way we organized the retreat was that we did a little survey among ourselves to figure out what are the important topics the IB is caring about. And then we organized ourselves into small breakout groups on specific topics we found in the survey. And one topic that, of course, came up many times was the situation we're in right now. And basically, two aspects here. One is like, what are the technical impacts we see from the crisis on the internet? What are the lessons learned? But also, how does the crisis and moving everything to virtual disimpact ourselves? And for the first part, more in the technical part, we are now planning to organize a workshop to get even broader input from the community. You find more detailed information in the slides from the IB Open Session, but I also have some more information on the next slide. Then another topic that came up during the retreat and that we're continuously discussing things is this whole topic of evolvability, deployability, and maintainability. Also have more information on one of the next slides. But that's probably going to be a new program. We have a mailing list for that, where discussion is ongoing. Actually, not much is happening at the moment, because the meeting was just now, and we had discussion there, but I'm sure we will see more discussion pretty soon there. Then maybe some other things that came up in the retreat was still topics which are related to the increased deployment of security and effects of... and effects of consolidation we can see there. Effects on traffic engineering, also now in the crisis and the need for maybe some kind of traffic. Quality of service handling, prioritization and so on. These are topics which are still under discussion in the in the IB. We didn't decide what we want to do here, if we need some documents, we need a workshop, we need more long-term programs because we see more work here, but that are interesting or like important topics, architecture topics we are looking at right now. And of course, there also have been discussions in the retreat around what's the long-term strategy of the IB? How do we see the the IB to be in future? And there has been a little bit of tension between the community and trust of the leadership. How can we improve the situation? How can we be more open? How can we work better together with the community? And how can we also understand better if the thing we're doing, not only as the IB, but as the IETF as a whole, is actually successful? So that's a set of topics. If we have a little more time, I can show three more slides. So on the workshop I just mentioned, as I said, the the scope is currently pretty broad and we will figure out or we will decide what how to design the workshop based on the input we get. So the idea here is that people can stand until October, beginning of October, I believe, short position papers. And we're interested in things like measurements, user experience, what happened behind the scene, anecdotal stories about how, you know, some people kind of saved the world by keeping the internet running in this situation. But also general experience about connectivity conferencing, things that have changed that we discovered. And then we want to figure out, you know, what are the lessons learned from this? And what do we need to bring back into the IETF community to improve our work and to improve the internet? And then maybe on this point a little bit, because maybe those three terms alone are not really meaningful to everybody. So here the idea is to really have a program where we want to first of all, look at the protocols we have and figure out what's good about them and can we provide more advice such that the protocols we design are flexible and extensible. Like the IB already has a bunch of documents published which which give a lot of guidance about protocol design. But there's definitely more things we can say and we can learn and we have learned in the past and we should actually write down and archive so people can read it and we can share this knowledge. Deployability, what we see here is really that we're, I mean, the IB was always focused on running code. But what we see in the last couple of years is that we are more and more aligned again with trying to develop our specs together with with code and to verify the specifications we have while in the process in the IETF and then also implement stuff at the same time. And a couple of working groups use different tools like Wiki pages or GitHub or whatever to collect this information, to understand how those different implementations interop, which implementation exists, which features are supported, which features are the most important one and these kind of things. So that is happening already, but it's kind of very inefficient. So we want to help to get tools running and we want to help also to get these things more visible to people from the outside. Because if you don't know it's on GitHub, it's really hard to find sometimes this information. And then maintainability is a point which goes beyond the point where you actually write the RC and you have the spec. And the question is really, you know, follow on on what implementers needs, get a connection with implementers community, especially when there's no working group which is maintaining a certain protocol. Implementers often don't know how they can reach somebody if they have a question, these kind of things. So there's also some aspects about outreach here which might be interesting for the ISOC as well. And then a final slide, I wanted to take the opportunity and also point you at an article that some of our IB members wrote. So this is not like an official IB statement or an official output of the IB, but it was discussed in the IB and it is very nice read from my point of view. And the point here really is that especially in this situation, we have seen how important the internet is. The internet keeps connecting people in the world. And we see the strength of the internet that it kind of just worked. Even so, I mean, there have been a lot of efforts in the background. But we see that the architecture model of the internet has proven actually to be, you know, strong in this situation and that it can involve not only in this situation, but also what we've seen in the past, like the internet is changing a lot. It's not the same internet anymore as it was at the beginning. So we definitely try in the IETF as a whole, also in the IB to, you know, just keep the internet running and keep the internet make work better. And that's my little report here. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you, Miria.
For some reason, you were just breaking up from.
Stop sharing, then we can see if there's questions with it.
Sure.
Yeah, so exactly, perfect. So I was asking if there's questions. Richard, please.
Yeah, just a quick question, Miria. This COVID-19 workshop sounds really interesting. I think that'll that'll be a good point in the evolution of this to stop and collect thoughts. Do you know if there's a call for proposals or anything out for that already? Or is this something we should be looking at before?
No, I think we were planning to send it out last week, but then somehow it got lost. It's ready, so it should be sent out kind of any day.
Okay, cool. Thanks.
Thank you. Any any other questions for Media?
Yeah, so with this workshop, we also, we did think about, we're trying to get like a very talk plenary together for this meeting, but it was a little bit too a talk. But we hope that we can get some follow-on from this workshop and maybe then have a plenary later or other other ways to report back. Because the point of the workshop is also that maybe people can go there and share information which they don't want to share publicly, but at least we can collect them and then, you know, look at all the information together and see how we can use the information.
So will it be held under some more restrictive sharing rule than than the usual openness?
We're not sure about this. It depends on the input we get. But we also see that having it virtual doesn't mean that everybody has to be in the same room all the time. So we can maybe be more flexible there. It's also set up for, you know, just in the in the coffee papers, we'll just like name one week where the workshop will take place, which is the second week of November. But we are not, we didn't decide yet like how much time we want to offer, how many blocks, how many sessions it will be at the end. It will, it won't be the whole week.
Hey, thank you, Media. Please keep us updated also on on your thoughts or conclusions on, you know, and how successful the IETF is or whether or not it's successful and all that. Because that's also very important to us to to understand, you know, your thoughts on that.
Yeah, so that's an ongoing discussion because it's not like something easy to assess and it's also, I mean, this is kind of also leading into this maintainability part where we really think we need to get touch with people, you know, who use our products and maybe don't come to the IETF or don't connect to the IETF during RC writing time.
Yeah, yeah, no, I I know it's not easy, but that's what I mean, that, you know, it's it's good to to understand, you know, your thoughts on that next time we we speak. Yeah.
Sure.
Okay, thank you, Media. Thanks a lot. And we appreciate it very much. Sorry to to have you join during the weekend. Thanks a lot.
Yeah, for like 10 minutes, no problem.
Okay, thank you, Media.
Okay, enjoy the rest of your meeting.
Thank you. Have a good weekend. Okay, so moving along in the agenda, I see, by the way, I see Jason has joined, so welcome, Jason. And the next slot is Alyssa, she's gonna she's gonna present. Okay, now all the windows moved. Okay, Alyssa is there. She's gonna be presenting. She's the the IETF chair, so Alyssa, please.
Thank you. So Kevin, are you good to? Oh, actually, I sent you slides just just while Maria was speaking. So if you got those, that would be great. Otherwise, I can share.
Yeah, it'll it'll take me a while to get those from one laptop to another. Can you just go ahead and share those yourself?
No problem. Yep. Does that look okay?
Yes.
Excellent. So thank you so much for having me. I'm Alyssa Cooper. I'm the chair of the IETF and I'm really pleased to be here and welcome to the many new board members. Just want to say that the support of of ISOC is integral to the IETF. And I thank you for your your service on the board. For that reason, we wouldn't be able to do what we do without the the tremendous support of ISOC. So really appreciate the time that you all are putting into to this important work. Since we have some new board members who might not be as intimately familiar with the IETF as some others, I thought I would just spend a few minutes here at the beginning, talking a little bit about what the IETF is and what we do.
That would be perfect. Thanks.
Sure. So the IETF is a large international standards organization where we standardize communications protocols for the internet. There's thousands of engineers from around the world who participate in the work of the IETF. And our mission is to produce high-quality, relevant technical and engineering documents that influence the way that people design, use and manage the internet in order to make it work better. It's a pretty simple mission and has has been fairly focused over time, although the volume of our work has certainly increased. We are approaching about 9,000 standards documents that we've produced. And we have about 120 working groups where all of this work takes place. And the working groups are focusing on different areas of of the technology stack. Our participants come from many different sectors, you know, from the technology industry, obviously, network operators, vendors, application providers. We have a contingent from academia, participants from government, from the nonprofit sector. So it's quite a diverse population in terms of the perspectives that they bring to the engineering work. Just to give that a little bit more color in terms of, you know, what are, what does the IETF actually produce? We organize our work into six different technical areas. And I've just listed here a very small number of of kind of high profile.
Alyssa, I can still see the first slide. Are you
Oh.
on a different slide or?
Yes, I've definitely advanced.
Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe you want to go into slideshow mode? It might help.
Yeah, I'm in I'm in sliding slide like presenter mode. Let's see what I can.
So I'm not seeing presenter mode for, I'm just seeing the edit, the edit interface.
I think, yeah, I think you need to share the other screen.
I don't have another screen, so.
You can share, I think it's sharing the individual window as opposed, and it pops out the presentation mode into a new window just to confuse you.
Okay, yeah, I never use Zoom, so. Let's see. Try this again.
We, I mean, at my day job, we use Teams and it's the same thing, you know. For some reason, it gets stuck in the first slide very often.
There we go.
Yeah, now it's in full screen mode. Yeah. Okay, now it works. Excellent.
The mission statement?
Yes, now we do. Perfect.
Okay, so I talked about the mission statement and you can see a lovely photo of of people working away at one of our IETF hackathons. So we break our work down into six different technical areas. The internet area where we're looking at sort of the packet format and addressing. So seminal standards like IPv4, IPv6 DNS have come out of the internet area. With routing, we're looking at how do we select paths? How do we forward the traffic through the network? So protocols like BGP, MPLS for traffic engineering. We have the operations and management area where we standardize building blocks and protocols that help operators manage their networks and configure devices onto the network. So SNMP, Yang, NetCom. In the transport area, we think about the end-to-end path and performance of traffic on the network. So TCP, UDP, and then more recently, we have a protocol called Quick, which we are close to finalizing the first version of. In applications and real-time area, we look at many different kinds of applications. So HTTP for the web, S and SMP and IMAP for email, SIP and WebRTC for real-time, just some examples. And then in the security area, we standardize protocols and primitives that support security across the board. So protocols like Transport Layer Security TLS and IPSEC. As I said, we have 120 working groups and we're producing hundreds of of standards documents every year. So I've selected just like a very small number of highlights of work that we have completed since the last time I I spoke to you all in November. And some of these are are just cherry picked based on the current trends in the industry as well. So we have a working group that's focused on time-sensitive networking, looking at how we can guarantee certain performance characteristics for traffic traversing a single administrative domain or a single network. So this is highly relevant for things like audio and video production environments, factory floors, these kinds of things. The working group is called, we call it DetNet deterministic networking. And they've recently completed their architecture and a couple of their data plane documents that explain how do we use DetNet on an IP-based network. We've also had a one recent accomplish, we specify a lot of different building blocks for IoT, but the one that I wanted to highlight was around this static context header compression or chic, as we call it. So this is looking at compressing the the data that needs to be sent on networks for that support low-power wide-area networks. So these are like Sigfox or or LoRa for those of you who are IoT people. And then we've also recently published a specification called Geneva, which is in the area of network virtualization. And what we've seen with data center networks in particular is that we had, as they started to be virtualized, kind of a proliferation of different ways of abstracting the underlying network away from from the endpoints. And so Geneva actually aims to create a generic way of doing this so that as we have more and more of these different, what we call encapsulations, we can have a more generic framework that makes them more interoperable between different data center components. So just a few highlights that kind of demonstrate the breadth of the work that we have going on and the and the kinds of use cases that we're trying to serve in the industry. In terms of new work, we have a bunch of new work that's recently gotten started. And I will say that I had anticipated that some of this might slow down a little bit with with COVID. But we've actually seen a lot of interest in 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 getting new work started in the IETF that COVID notwithstanding. So the Adaptive DNS Discovery Working Group, it's a new working group, we call it ADD. This is looking at the fact that we now have multiple different protocols that are encrypting DNS traffic. And because of that, we have new clients and operating systems that are involved in DNS resolution that previously weren't weren't involved. And so the ADD group is looking at how do we, if you have multiple different DNS resolvers, how do you select them? How do you discover them? So for those who have been following the debates around DNS over HTTPS or DO, this is very much a follow-on work to the the specification of DO that we did a couple of years ago. As I mentioned, we have this quick protocol, which is nearing nearing publication or nearing finalization, I should say. And Quick is is special because it's the first transport protocol that that will is very likely to see wide deployment on the internet in in quite some time, multiple decades. And as that that effort is is reaching sort of an important milestone, we're already starting to see multiple new efforts that want to build on top of it. So MASK, which is the first one listed here, is aiming to create a sort of tunneling protocol that builds off of Quick. And then web transport similarly is taking advantage of the existence of Quick to develop a new protocol for sharing information bidirectionally between clients and servers on the web. So pretty exciting to see Quick coming to an early milestone and now lots of interest in in building other things on top of Quick. And then lastly, just at the most recent IETF meeting, we had, we had the first session for a new working group called Stay Home Meet Online or Schmoo. And this is our working group where we are talking with the community about guidelines for things like canceling in-person meetings, which we've had to do both this month and for our March meeting. How do we do agenda planning for meetings that are held entirely online? What do we think the fee structure should look like? What do we think the tooling support? What kinds of functional requirements do we need for tooling support? So these are all pressing questions that we're having to decide on the fly as we convert our in-person meetings to online meetings. But we thought it would be good to get consensus-based community guidance for these things that we could use far into the future if we ever encounter this kind of situation again, as we have right now with the pandemic. Or if the community feels that they actually like these online meetings and we want to convert to a model that involves more online meetings and less in-person meetings. So that's what the the Schmoo group is has just started looking at. And speaking of conversion to online meetings, we have just yesterday concluded IETF 108. So at IETF 107, which was in March, we also had an all-online meeting. But it was, the agenda was quite limited. We used our existing. We used our existing Webex platform that we had used previously and we ran 12 sessions. At I T F 108, we ran much more of a, a full agenda. So we had more than 100 sessions scheduled over the last week. And we used our Meet Echo platform, which we had been previously using for remote participation at the I T F. It, the Meet Echo team implemented a bunch of upgrades for us on a very short notice, which includes for those who are familiar with the I T F, a little tool to, for us to use to take hums, to gather, to gauge consensus in the room. You can see it there on the left hand side panel. You know, we had video and audio, as you would expect. We had a nice collaborative tool for taking and editing minutes, which you can see there in the middle panel. And we had 1,100 registered attendees. We don't know exactly how many of them showed up, but you know, many sessions, but you know, between 100 and 200 participants throughout the week and some technical glitches. But from what I can see from the sessions that I participated in, a lot of progress that was made as, as you would normally expect at an I T F meeting. So we're gonna gather a bunch of feedback, we're gonna do a survey of participants as we always do, and we're gonna continue gathering that feedback from the community to try to, you know, tailor the experience and improve it for everybody. But in terms of the kind of baseline, we made it through I T F 108 and we had what I would consider to be a successful meeting. So that is what I had and I'm happy to take questions and I'll stop sharing.
Thank you, Alyssa. Yeah, that was useful and thanks for giving the overview because as you said, I mean, we have a lot of new trustees, so it's good to get everyone on, on the same page. Questions for Alyssa? So Alyssa, what do you think about the Gather platform? Because I was checking and you know, some of the features looked quite cool, but I'm not sure, you know, what has been the level of usage and all that? Do you have a view on that?
Yeah, so just for everybody else's benefit, we used a platform called Gather.Town as an informal networking space during the whole meeting week. So it was a, you know, a website you can visit, you have a little avatar that's running around, a map that, that we built, which kind of looks like a map of a hotel conference center. And I would say, people who used it, like the features are super cool. It's, it was really nice to recreate the ad hoc, you just run into somebody in the hallway. You can also locate people in there so you could find somebody and go chat. That the experience of someone just like strolling up and having, you know, the serendipitous conversation, not as good as, as it is when you're co-located physically, but, but it was nice to have those features. I think the difficulty that we continuously run into, just like everybody else, is time zones and because you're not co-located, everybody's not in there at, at the same time. That, you know, whenever, I don't know what the peak was of the number of people who were in there, but I bet it didn't hit 200, even though we had 1,100 people registered. So, you know, that's not something we can solve. But we're definitely gonna think about, you know, other ways to make it more valuable. But overall, I expect that the feedback on Gather.Town will be quite positive.
Yeah, yeah, I liked it a lot. So yeah, I thought it was quite cool, actually. Okay, any, any more questions for Alyssa? And Mike?
Yeah, I just want to learn a little bit more about Gather, just because is this like a second life type environment? Or I mean, what, what would I compare it to, Alyssa? Without, I mean, I'm gonna, because what I now want to do is like explore it and write about it, because I think we're gonna be doing online conferencing for a long time. So I want to see what our choices are. So who's the vendor and what's, you know, what should I compare it to in terms of virtual environments? If you don't mind, maybe a minute on that.
Yeah, so it's like the Legend of Zelda version of Second Life, is what I would say.
Exactly the metaphor I was reaching.
It's, it's like a purposefully retro user interface. So like, it's like a 2D map and you have this like really, you know, low grade avatar that's running around. You know, you can change like the color of your shirt and your hair, but you, you can't really make a persona. But the, but it has, the thing that's cool about it has proximity audio and video. So as you approach somebody else in, in the map, then you, you start to get a faint view of them. And then when you get closer, you get the full view of their audio and video just streaming. So they kind of ditched the whole virtual reality aspect and went for a very, you know, lo-fi animated experience, but then the actual audio and video experience is good. So if you look at something like Mozilla Hubs, that's maybe kind of comparable, there's, there's a bunch of these now that are doing proximity audio and video, but have, trying to give you more of like a V R type of experience. But this, this was, I think, simpler for us. We didn't really need the V R bit. And it's like three guys from San Bruno. I anticipate like, and they worked very closely with us, like they implemented stuff for us without us paying them. I, I expect when people discover them, they will stop doing that and they will start getting paid for what they do because it's, it's gonna prove to be a really valuable tool.
So Alyssa, I may reach out to you offline, just to follow up on this, because it seems like something that I might research independently of I S O C.
Also, I mean, a whole bunch of us tried it when we were there. So, you know, paying us and we can tell you what we thought about it.
Thank you, John.
Yeah, so Mike, Alyssa is right that you can change the color of the avatar, of the hair of the avatar, you cannot remove the hair, so.
I ended up looking like Mario.
Yeah, exactly.
So there's nothing wrong with that. Not being able to remove the hair is fine. I wish I had that option here.
Could be a feature of a bug, you know, depends on, on how you look at it. Okay, Alyssa, but hey, thanks a lot. And the same, the same as I was telling media, I mean, sorry for, for having you join during the weekend, but that's, you know, when we are running the A G M.
Yeah, I understand.
Thanks a lot.
Thanks.
Thank you, Alyssa. Okay, good. So I see Jason ready to go and also Glenn joins, so welcome Jen, Glenn. Um, so Jason, please go ahead.
Thank you very much. And I think you guys should, oh, there we go. Thank you. So like Alyssa, I will give a bit of background, particularly for all the new I S O C trustees. My name is Jason Lovinggood. I'm the board chair of the I T F's board, the I T F LLC. And so appreciate your time. I've previously been an I S O C trustee, so I know what that process is like and good luck coming on board. It's a lot of information to take on in a short period of time. So next slide, please. So these are the folks that serve on our board. It's a very small board, which is helpful in getting things done. You may know, know some of these folks in your communities. Not sure, obviously Alyssa just spoke, you hopefully should remember Sean. And, and then we've got Peter Van Roestra, who is based in Brussels and Maya Anuklovic, who is, works for the World Bank in the U S. And so we've got, you know, good sized board and this is the initial board that we had to sort of bootstrap the organization, the first full board. Next slide. So this is background and I'm guessing Kevin can distribute the slides later because I won't go through each of these backgrounders. But in essence, as you're probably learning in your onboarding process, the internet society and I T F have always been very, very closely intertwined. And, you know, support of the, of the I T F has been a core aspect or tenant of the internet society for many years, since its formation, and was a core part of that and a core part of, you know, the dot org bit. Next slide. So the creation of the LLC, so if we go back to really sort of how did the I T F get formed as a sort of legal entity over the years? It has always been an activity underneath the internet society and it, for many years, was a very informally chartered one. It became a little bit more so many years ago when there was an administrative oversight committee formed. But this, a couple of years ago, when we formed the LLC, that was really the first time that we created a sort of formal legal structure for the I T F that was intended to handle all of our administrative, financial and legal aspects of operating the I T F standards process. And that's best, you know, that's sort of the headline, the high level, like what, what is the LLC? We're not focused on the technical standards themselves. That's what the I E S G is for and what Alyssa's job is focused on. We're really there to make sure that there is the appropriate administrative and legal and financial structure and resources for the organization to be successful. And, you know, that is really just a normal part of our maturation as a standards organization. And I should also note, you know, in comparison to many of the other standards orgs out there and even sort of quasi standards one, whether you look at sort of ones like ICANN or W3C or other more paid membership based, you know, standards development organizations. The I T F is very broad, where some of those standards orgs tend to be sort of narrow and deep. So the I T F is very broad as well as deep. And I think comparatively, when you look at the sort of legal and administrative and financial structure, it runs fairly lean compared to a lot of other organizations, which is, has helped, you know, the I T F thrive over the years. Most of the, the work as an example are done by volunteers as working group chairs rather than say paid staffers that are helping do that or helping minute things and so on. Next slide. So since we formed the LLC about, you know, I think we're at two years now, starting in the August timeframe, we've done a lot. We've hired an executive director who is Jay Daly. And we've established and shared his goals. And I should note in terms of sharing, we decided as we formed the LLC to sort of establish an approach of radical transparency. So we're very, very open about all the things that we do, very open in terms of the way that we ask for input from the community and so on. And so try to go above and beyond. So even in, you know, the, the more tactical goal setting of our executive director, we share all of that. We hired a director of communications and operations, Greg Wood, a former I S O C employee. We developed a process for open community consultation and we use that for our initial round of forming policies like our anti harassment and conflict of interest policies. So all of those policies were developed and we went above and beyond, really trying to meet or exceed industry best practices. And some of that was required to, to sort of comply with the agreement that we had with you on formation, but a number of others were additive to that. We've increased our budget transparency in part, in large part by being able to finally once and for all define all of our actual costs, instead of having costs shared by other organizations and sort of not disclosed, or in many cases, not even knowing what all of our direct costs were. We spent the last year or so trying to make sure that we understood all those direct costs, you know, accounted for them, the separate line items and so on, which has been a great thing. And now, you know, working to continue with our budget transparency. And the key is that we have tried to establish the LLC as living within a defined financial envelope, instead of always sort of not really having a budget, like having a target. And if we missed it, oh, well, we'll just go and ask for more money for my SOC. We didn't really like that approach. We wanted the organization to live within a financial envelope and have to make cost benefit decisions about where to invest resources as an organization. That's a key part of the maturation of I T F. We completed our first successful independent audit, no issues. So we thought that was a big deal. And of course, as Alyssa mentioned, we transitioned to fully online meetings. And Greg, I don't know if you can slide down a little bit, I'm not seeing the whole page. I don't know if there's a way to fit that in, go into present mode and. Okay, so we established a standard template for R F Ps and an open process for that. And we have issued 11 R F Ps and awarded contracts associated with those, finalized our investment policy statement to guide investments. And we've been investing into the market to, to put those funds to work. Next slide. So if you look at future plans in three to five years here, and I'll touch on some of this in a moment, we intend to hire a fundraiser to broaden on our sponsorship base and raise significant funds for the organization moving forward, continuing to support and strengthen the open internet standards process, which we think has been incredibly important, which I'll mention here in another bullet. Reliability and performance, so as you'll see later on in the year as we talk about our budget, when we came on board, we looked at all the risks, if you will, of the organization. One of those has been an antiquated suite of tools, many of which were sort of created in-house bespoke, when in a lot of cases, there are off the shelf things that are cloud based, that are cheaper or free or can do quite a bit more functionally. And so what we're trying to sort of subtly do is invest to shift platforms and modernize them to make them sort of cloud ready or cloud native in many cases, improve performance and reliability. And over time, I think part of that is enabling or creating the opportunity for I T F participants to really spend time on standards rather than supporting and developing tools for the standards process. Because, you know, when they were created maybe 10 or 15 years ago, they didn't exist. But now there's a lot of tools, organizations live online. And so there's a lot of things we can go look at. And of course, a big one, which is, you know, coming up again and again, especially at this last meeting, is improving the diversity of our participants and contributors. That includes things, including based on gender and race and country and so on. And critically moving to a friendlier and more inclusive culture that embraces new participants. And this has been sort of an historical challenge with I T F. And so, you know, we're helping provide funding for the organization to explore that, provide, you know, legal and other policy support to help them out as that happens. Mostly that's a process led by the I S G and I V and others, but it's, it's obviously something that's critical to sort of the long-term success of the organization. And then of course, adapting to the post-COVID reality, most of our standards processes run online anyway, really just the meetings and face-to-face sort of interactions that have been moving online. And Alyssa touched that, touched on that, I won't go into more details there. The good part for us is that unlike organizations like maybe the I T U T or others that really thrived based upon weeks and weeks and weeks of in-person meetings, the I T F has, you know, long been based on online tools and online collaboration. So next slide. So I'll go into this maybe in August or September when we talk again, I think September rather. You know, we've got a bunch of, of things that we feel like the I T F critically enabled from a standard standpoint that helped the world's economy sort of sustain itself with work from home and learning from home and so on. And we think that we're on a good trajectory in terms of new standards work that's happening at the I T F. Next slide. So this touches back on the longer list I had a few slides ago of, of work that we've done. I think, you know, really the two things as takeaways here are, we're doing sort of a mid-year reforecast. I'll show you the financials in a second, but really because of COVID-19, one of our primary costs is face-to-face meetings. So to the extent that those don't happen, that affects the revenue model, but it also affects the cost model. So, you know, rather than pretend like we might be back at a face-to-face meeting in another two months, we're really just doing your reforecast, re-baselining the budget to show their reality. And of course, we have a support agreement with you all, with I S O C, that basically has expired and needs to be renewed this year for next fiscal year's support and beyond. And so we've been working on that for a number of months. And I think, you know, based on latest discussions are hoping to come before you in the September-ish timeframe to talk in more detail. So that's our, our key objective for the year. And really my sole focus as board chair is, is getting that process complete for the long term. Next slide. I won't go into the executive director goals, next slide, keep going. So here are the financials. As you can see, this has been an incredibly disrupted year. You know, we had a humongous drop year to date in revenue. And, you know, that's really the result of the face-to-face meetings not happening. Of course, the benefit of that is that because we don't have to do all of those things, there are a lot of costs that are lower as a result. And so, you know, we've been doing our best to sort of shave and cut here and there. And we maintain an operate, our operating reserves that we can dip into in the worst case, but we've tried to really tailor operations to adapt to, you know, the new financial considerations. Next slide. So here are some contact information links here. If you'd like to get in touch with us, or if you'd like to read more about our financial statements or policies and so on, feel free. And I think that's it for me. Thank you for your time. Happy to take any questions.
Hello, Jason. Any questions for Jason? John, please.
Yeah, just to comment, I think it was a real coup getting Jay to work for you. I've known him for years from the ICANN S C A, and I can't imagine anybody who would do as good a job. He's very competent and he very quickly kind of figured out how to deal with the I T F's quirky personalities and, you know. And, you know, and certainly, you know, like to the extent I have a supervisor, he is my supervisor and he's a delight, he's a delight to work for. So congratulations.
Good. Thanks. Yeah. Our key goal was, you know, when we started as a board, I think we found we were into a lot of the tactical detail and decision-making. And we really wanted to hire in a player that, you know, had the right skillset, but also had a feel for the culture. And I'm glad to hear that you feel we made the right decision. We do as well.
So that was John sucking up to his supervisor.
It's been worse. It's my supervisor's supervisor.
Okay, whatever. Any further questions? Jason, you were mentioning diversity and I think you guys should look also into A. When, when you look into diversity, because, you know, getting the next generation of engineers interested in the plumbing of the internet, as we have discussed thousands of times. I think that would be really great. So just another aspect of diversity to be.
Yeah, for sure. And there's a, some sponsorship programs that we're trying to develop. We've got some initial sponsors to help do that. But you're right, it's, it's sort of, that's the funnel, if you will, the funnel of people that are paying attention to the community. And a key part of it as well, and this goes back to the modernizing the tools infrastructure. You know, you get a, an undergrad, you know, coming out of school and they look at the toolset and they're like, what? Oh, my God, what is this? You know, it's totally unlike anything that they've used before, like the open source community. And so, you know, some of that updating of the tech platforms helps keep, you know, helps maybe not repel new, you know, younger participants. So that's good. But I think as well, you know, much like a lot of technical organizations, we are predominantly male in particular. So there's a gender diversity challenge that we have been working on with IETF sisters and other programs. And there's certainly also a, certainly cultural diversity. So it's a very Western-centric, less in the eastern part of the world as well as the southern hemisphere. So there's much more work to be done there. And, you know, we've seen, for those of you that aren't close to it, it was interesting this week in the Gen Dispatch Working Group, there was a a document put forward by a couple of folks that were trying to raise things like, you know, exclusionary and discriminatory language that are used in technical standards. So for those of you that may not know, like in the DNS types of, you know, standards, people often describe master and slave for different types of servers, right? And so this document was intended to try to bring that conversation into the IETF to say, you know, we should look at some of those terms and question, why have they been used? And how can we set standards for how those, you know, would be changed in the future? And it's been interesting and somewhat disturbing as well to see some of those discussions. And there's a lot of, I would say, lacking of awareness of the impact of some of those things in the community. So there's a lot of work to be done. And so we view it as, as one of the areas that we can really help the organization with. It's going to take time, but we'll see. I mean, it's, it's such a great organization overall. I'm sure they'll adapt just fine. But, you know, it, we're in the same place that many, many other technical organizations are, which just means we've got a lot of work to do.
Ted had a question. Ted, please.
Just a quick question on hiring a fundraiser. I noted in your, in your discussion, you were kind of indicating that was on the plate, but not necessarily happening right now. And I, I was wondering if there was a chance the LLC board might consider bringing that forward. I think in this particular situation, it's going to take a fair amount of time to develop the fundraising of contacts and to get into people's budgets, given, given the likely downturn in a lot of our historical support groups. And it seems like even though it's an added expense in a year where you're trying to shed expenses, it's probably one of the few expenses that's going to pay itself back over the relatively short term. And so I wonder if that's a consideration where that timeframe might be reconsidered by the board?
It is in a way. And actually, you know, I should say, we may sort of have solved your problem somewhat. We were able to work with AMS to have one of their staffers dedicated part-time to help us manage all the sponsorships and fundraising. But that is, I think, on a, that's sort of one handling most of the tactical sponsorship transactions, if you will, and working on developing some new ones. And I think part two of that is that looking a little bit more over the horizon about what are some programs that we might develop? And, and so I think that they're the bridge to help us get through the next six to nine months. And so I would say, once we get the, the agreement done with all of you with ISOC, this is our next priority is to then hire. And when I say hire, it may be a contractor or contractors in different regions. I don't think we have the model yet. Which is where we're spending a lot of time discussing and thinking, but point well taken to make sure pivoting, you know, very hard to them.
Well, I appreciate that you're considering multiple models there and that that's very useful and valuable. But I, I do kind of feel like sticking to the tactical in this year is very dangerous. So I, I hope you might consider working with us during the discussions in September to possibly bring that forward because obviously it also affects ISOC as a whole, because money that comes in there counts for our public support test and affects our ability to disperse funds from other sources. So I think it's really something where there's a strategic interest in bringing the fundraising as far forward at a strategic level as is practical. And it may not be practical to do it before, before then, but it would be very useful.
Cool. Thanks.
Thank you. My Mona, please.
Thank you, Jason, for this presentation. I have a question about the diversity you were talking about. On your slide, you talk, you talk about gender diversity. I think it's, it's a good one. But it's, I think it's also another point to talk about geographic diversity on IETF. I spent years with a university where we try to bring people, young people to the IETF process. But it is not easy, specifically for those who are not English speaking. Because all the process is in English and even if you bring a good, good young people, sometime because of the language, they did not, they will not be able to follow up the discussion and be really involved on it. That's why I'm thinking about how to involve more universities in Africa to be sure that you will get people, because people are interesting on, on standards. At the ITU, for example, we have several people who work with the, the ITU for T. But it's very difficult for us to be involved in IETF and all those standards when it comes to internet. And I think it's, it's great, for example, to use the web, because with this crisis, we, we see that we cannot continue using the face-to-face meeting. But I think it's also interesting to see how to involve more people from developing countries, because we have our specific problem. I think we can also have our specific solution. Thank you.
Yep. Very good point. Thank you.
Laura, please.
Hi, I understand that you all develop most of your tools in-house. And I was curious how you were thinking about that going forward, what strategy was going to be in 2020 on and beyond?
Yeah, I think as Richard and John and others that are very involved in IETF would recognize it's an approach that doesn't seem to make a lot of long-term sense. In particular, where we might have developed tools that are replicated in commercial toolsets that might be much more scalable with better interfaces and data, you know, analysis tools in terms of usage and more reliable and so on. So I think, you know, what we've had Jay do, and there's sort of an architecture tools team starting to look at this to study, you know, what are, where are needs really today? Where are they going? What are the kinds of tools that we really want? And I think of the preferences to find, you know, tools that are available in open source or that are available in the cloud commercially, rather than having to sort of build our own. You know, there are always going to be cases where we'll want to customize and maybe there are gaps where we might want to build our own. But the default of like nothing else, pretending nothing exists and we have to start from scratch with everything doesn't make any sense anymore. And of course, I should just mention that historically, it had to happen organically, sort of, you know, developed by the group, because those tools didn't exist, but were in a very different spot than we, you know, were 10 or 15 years ago.
Any other questions for Jason? Okay, good. Thank you, Jason. And again, I apologize for making you work over the weekend.
No problem. No problem. I'm going to go to the beach now. Thank you.
Okay, life could be worse. Have a good weekend. Bye-bye. Okay, good. So next on the line is Glenn. I see Glenn there. Hello, it's yours.
Hello. Hello, hello. Ted, are you going to run the slides or sorry, Kevin, are you going to run the slides for me? All right. Hey, so I'm Glenn Dean. I'm the Chair of the IETF Trust. I, we're sort of the, the small quiet part you've heard from the IAB, the, the LLC and the IETF itself. We're the sort of the often forgotten little part of the IETF, because we're pretty quiet and we're kind of boring. Next slide, please. So these are the five trustees. They are volunteers from the, the IETF community and from the ISOC Board, John Levine, of course, is our representative from ISOC appointed. It, so Kathleen Amorti is our treasurer, Joel Halpern, John Levine and Stefan Wagner. Fill up the five slots. Next slide, please. So if I look familiar to some of you, it's probably because either you work with me in the IETF or you may have seen me in the NOMCOM, because I was on the NOMCOM this past year for ISOC. So I helped interview several of our, our new trustees. And we thought maybe it would be useful to sort of give a bit of a background of where all this came from and what the trust does. Because we are so quiet, we're not always the most obvious thing. We don't develop standards. We do legal work, that maybe it would be useful to give a bit of background. So the IETF had a problem prior to the creation of the LLC, going back a number of years. We had work that was being done that was generating intellectual property. It was either things like the IETF logo itself, the copyrights around the RFCs that we published, all this stuff that was being submitted in, and there needed to be a means to legally manage those assets and to be able to represent and defend those assets when necessary. And since the IETF itself didn't have a legal structure, eventually through some discussions and some people with various opinions on how things should be put together, the IETF Trust was created. And its goal was to essentially manage the IP assets for the IETF. Originally, the membership of it, and we'll get on to how they're selected today, originally the membership was formed from what used to be called the IROC, which was the, the administrative committee prior to the IETF LLC being created. And membership essentially was if you're an IROC member, then you were invited to become a trustee. And then you took on the role of the trust and you signed some agreements and you were suddenly a trustee. In 2016, some of you may recall, there was a divestiture by the INTIA here in the United States, the IANA functions. And there's a lot of discussions that ICANN that took place. One of the side effects of those discussions was that they also discovered they needed a place that was neutral and could be trusted to hold IP assets and manage them for them. And so in 2016, some of the IANA assets, in particular the IANA registry, but also some of the core names like IANA.org, the domains and stuff like that were brought over and given into the trust. And our trust manages IP assets for IETF. We also do some small work for IANA ICANN. So things we, we look over, what's IP assets? So things like contributions to the IETF. These are things that people submit is internet drafts and ultimately maybe, maybe become RFCs. But we worry about these things and manage the IP around them, copyrights. So RFCs themselves, when they're published, have a copyright assigned to them. If you notice some of Alyssa's comments when talking about some of the proposals being done around the world for new IP standards. One of the things that gets cited is that the IETF owns the copyrights and will continue to own the copyrights around its RFCs. Also little things like logos. So the IETF logo you hear, you see at the bottom screen is a registered trademark. It's also a copyrighted piece of art. So it's an interesting one, one that we often have to get creative on how we manage. Because part of the goal here with all of the IP, all the IP assets, the IETF generates is we want to make them available and easy to use. Unlike a lot of IP management places, our goal isn't to make any kind of revenue off of these things. It's to make them available for use openly as much as possible while still maintaining and protecting them. So that, for instance, people can't suddenly take the IETF registered trademark and apply it to their own products or their own work, thereby implying that they're somehow endorsed or part of the IETF. So we make sure we watch those very fine lines of protecting while at the same time enabling them to be widely used. Now that goes with trademarks, so the IANA marks, additional IETF marks, the IETF mark itself, we manage. We manage the IETF tools licenses, things like the Yang catalog. Yang catalog is a donation that was given into the IETF materials around the Yang toolset. And, and there's a bunch of parameters, a bunch of values and examples that we manage and manage license browsing. And then something as mundane as domain registrations, you know, who owns and manages IETF.org? From a domain perspective, lots of us, we take care of those. We also monitor new registrations that come up so that we make sure that nobody is suddenly, you know, putting up a new registration and trying to imply that they're us, the IETF or the ISG or the IRTF or the IB or IANA itself around the world. And we defend that if that happens. Next slide, please. So we're a pretty simple structure. We are trusts in the Commonwealth of Virginia. We're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. We are independent from ISOC and the IETF LLC. So, which is a little bit weird, but that's historical to try this. And if you want to have a, a good conversation with a few people like Ted and John Levine, who can tell you about the history of it over a cocktail, sometime when you're back together, it, it'll keep you enthralled for maybe five minutes. Maybe a half hour, depending upon your history here. But it's important to note that we are independent from them. We have a website there, five trustees. After the LLC IASA restructuring that was done at the IETF, as Jason talked about, we had a problem. The, the committee that preceded the LLC's board was dissolved. And the old rules where the trustees were all selected from the membership of that committee. So we had to rewrite the, the rule set. And as we did that, we had to come up with a new structure for how to appoint people to the trust. And so in the, in the end, it was decided that five people would, or three people would be appointed by the IETF NOMCOM. One would be appointed by the IETF ISG. And then one would be appointed by yourselves, the board of trustees. And that gives us a total of five trustees that represent the trust. One interesting aspect about being a trustee is that the, because we're a trust, technically and legally, the trustees are the owners of the trust. And so when we talk about various assets that the trust owns and manages, these five people literally for the duration of their term on the trust are one of the five owners of those assets. And so for instance, when you look up the registered trademarks in places that don't allow us to register to the trust, you will actually find our names as the listed owners of those trademarks. It's a weird, weird historical aspect of the way we are structured. And let's see what else. Budget-wise, we're very small. So the trustees themselves receive no support or, you know, income from being a trustee. It's a purely voluntary, voluntary position. So all the money we get essentially goes to running the trust and it's a small one. It's around $100,000 a year. That's primarily spent on legal and administrative services, trademark registration, domain registration, and insurance for the individual trustees, just like ISOC has trustee insurance on all of you. To support that budget, we seek a diversity of funding sources. Primarily, we get a lot of our funding from the IETF LLC. In the past, it came from the ISOC. And then when the IASA transition took place, that funding responsibility moved from ISOC to the LLC. So we get money for them. We also get outside funding. In the past year, we've got support from Google, NBC Universal, Tencent and some others. Next slide, please. So what are we doing in 2020? One of the things we are doing is we're going to update the IETF Trust website. If you visit that trustee.itf.org website, you will be greeted with a, a great example of a website about 20 years ago. It is a very outdated website. It's very hard to find things. And so we are in the final stages of the review to publish a brand-new website, which will hopefully make the, much easier to engage with the trust. It'll make it easier to find things and it'll make it easier when people want to request licenses for the things we manage to request those. As part of that update, we're going through and reviewing. As part of that update, we're going through and reviewing trust procedures, making sure they're current and accurate and reflect the actual operations of how we do things, along with the information documentation that support the information and engagement we do with the ITF and the broader community. We also routinely handle requests for use of the ITF logos and trademarks. That's just our standard business. And we have an ongoing practice for monitoring those things we manage for infringements. We also do one little fun thing, and that is we literally are fashion consultants to the ITF. When the ITF meeting is held, the tradition is that a, you know, host sponsor gets the ability to put on a T-shirt. And so one of the functions we get to do is we get to review that because it uses the ITF logo on those shirts. We have the ability to review and actually approve the use of those logos on those shirts. So we are fashion consultants as well as really boring legal people. Next slide, please. And if you want to get in touch with us, we get email at trustees@itf.org. And we also have a website, which is really horrible. I do suggest go visit it so you can see just how bad a website can be. Any questions?
Thank you, Glenn. Thank you. Any questions for Glenn? Maybe you need some fashion advice? I don't know.
Yeah, I would mention that as part of, sort of simultaneously with putting together the new website, it turns out that the trust has a lot of loose ends. I mean, for example, the ITF clearly owns the ITF's website, but it's not clear what the licenses for it, you know, there's stuff like that that we're in the process of cleaning up. I don't think it's anything that will be a great legal crisis, but I found the number of loose ends to be surprising and sort of embarrassing since I was actually on the IAOC, the trust predecessor. So I'm glad that we're in the process of cleaning it up. And I think, once we get the new website, I think we will see a somewhat tinier view of the ITF's intellectual property.
And if anybody's still around in 20 years, they can update that website when it needs updating 20 years from now.
Well, right.
Okay, Mike, please.
That's assuming that people will be using the web 20 years from now. It'll be the next thing after the web 20 years from now. So I was General Counsel of Wikimedia Foundation when we, when I, when, and one of my first tasks was to rationalize the licensing of the Wikipedia trademarks, which turned out to be quite valuable and recognizable. And I, so I, I'm aware of the balance that you have to strike as an NGO that has different kinds of relationships with volunteers and chapters and other kinds of satellite interests and organizations. I mentioned this only, I mean, I'm certainly happy to be a resource if you have any questions about how we solve certain problems. If you have any problems now, and maybe you don't. But what I also suggest is that if you get a chance to reach out to the legal and policy teams at the Wikimedia Foundation, they have now a track record that I started, you know, more than 10 years ago to handling very interesting public interest trademarks that are quite valuable. As you know, the task is not so much trying to extract licensing fees from them, although sometimes you can do that, but primarily to prevent their misuse by licensees. And you have to figure out how to, how to police that without being an ogre. So those problems have been solved, you know, at Wikimedia Foundation, more or less. So if you need a resource and you need some introductions or something, we're happy to help.
Okay, thanks, Mike. We'll keep it in mind.
Great.
Thank you, Mike. Any more questions for Glenn? Okay, Glenn, hey, thanks a lot. And again, I'm apologizing to all speakers for, you know, having you join during the weekend. This was very useful.
What does the weekend even mean anymore? I don't even know what that means anymore.
Right, right. Good point, good point. Thank you, Glenn. Hey, have a great day.
Thank you, guys. Bye bye.
Bye bye, bye bye. Okay, good. So next on the line is Crystal, and ICC has joined already. Crystal, the floor is yours.
Yeah, thank you. I would say good evening, but I think you're all in the US. It's probably earlier, earlier in the day for you guys. So happy Saturday, everyone.
I myself am here.
For those who don't know me, I'm Crystal Dalshad. Ah, very good. So it's your evening as well. For those who don't know me, I'm Crystal Dalshad. I am the outgoing, or actually now, I'm probably the former Chair of the Organizational Membership Advisory Council. I know there are a few new trustees formally taking up their positions today. So welcome, Myuna, Ted, George, Laura, and Heather. Ted, I voted for you. If you're unfamiliar with the OMAC, which I doubt any of you are, but if you are, then the OMAC acts as an advisory body to the ISOC Management and the Board of Trustees on matters that affect the general welfare and the effectiveness of the internet and the people who use it. And we represent around 95 organizations. And that spans academia, research, service providers, content providers, equipment manufacturers, international organizations, governments, and public interest groups. And I'm going to be super brief because my term has actually ended. I was hoping that one or all three of my, of my replacements would join us today, but it was fairly short notice because they only took their positions this Thursday. So I'm going to be super brief and give you a sort of brief summary of what we've been up to in the last six months. We started off the year with a survey of our membership to identify where people would be present. This is obviously pre-pandemic. So we try to generally schedule our in-person meetings to coincide with meetings where there will be a high number of attendees from the OMAC. Typically speaking, that will be ITF, ICANN, and IGF. And that was also the case this year, where we intended to meet at ITF in March, ICANN in June, and then IGF this November. But then the pandemic sort of struck us all, and we decided in late February that the remainder of this year's OMAC meetings would be virtual. Now, I wish Jim Calvin was still here with me, because this is one thing Jim and I has been talking about for two years. We desperately wanted to do more virtual stuff, to engage more people, and sort of get all the people who are not necessarily at ITF or ICANN to be involved and engaged with the OMAC community. We didn't think it would take a pandemic to sort of make that shift happen. Jim also left us at the end of February this year as Affilia has decided to discontinue their organizational membership of ISOC. We hosted a OMAC meeting on March 27. And we had a fair amount of attendees, 21, which is fairly decent for us, as well as two board members, where we reviewed the definitions of ISOC strategic goals. We looked at the strong and gray projects, and they were presented by ISOC staff. And we discussed them with the remainder of the OMAC community. And we identified ongoing and future engagement opportunities in connection with those. We also presented the schedule for the upcoming OMAC elections. And we encouraged individuals to nominate themselves or their colleagues to sort of run for the positions that would become open this summer. In the second quarter of the years, we sought nominations for the chair positions. We actually had five nominations, which is great, because when I came on, there was literally two nominations. You were stuck with me. Not so much by desire, as by no, no lack of choice. We had, we had five nominations, and this week we announced that the three new chairs are Chris Hameline, who is the Public Policy Manager at Facebook, Harold Suma, who is the CEO of D kicks, and Chris Wilson, who is our Senior Manager of Public Policy at Amazon. I've had an opportunity to speak with all three of the incoming chairs, and I think they're going to be a great asset. They sort of, between, between the three of them, they span policy and infrastructure. And I think that's going to be a really good, a really good mix. And I'm a really sort of, there's going to be some synergies between them that I think will benefit OMAC and ISOC going forward. And we announced them at the latest OMAC meeting, which took place this Thursday, where they were introduced. Everyone said goodbye to me. It's going to be very sad. I'm going to miss the ball pits, and I'm going to miss the cocktails. Am I not supposed to talk about cocktails? No, I'm kidding.
That's completely appropriate.
We also received a brief update on the encryption project from Ryan and Jeff. And they asked for sort of organization members to support and get involved with that project. I'm really sad that I'm leaving the OMAC. I'm not just leaving my chair position, but I'm actually leaving the OMAC because I've left PIA, which was the organization I represented. I really enjoyed my two-year term, and I would like to thank all of you and all ISOC staff and all organizational members for the support and encouragement I've had in my two-year term. But fear not, I will still be bothering you as a member of the England chapter. So I'll still be around, but in a slightly different capacity. The new chairs are already planning their next meeting, which I believe will take place in October this year. And I think that's about it. So I suppose, I said I would be brief, and I think, I think I managed it.
Thank you, Crystal. That was really good. And again, thanks for all the time you put into, into basically chairing the OMAC and everything. I mean, that has been very useful. And I agree, let's see if the three new chairs, they can basically inject a lot of new energy and bring things forward. That would be great. Absolutely.
I think they will be great. And I look forward to hopefully breaking bread with both them and many of you at ICANN and IGF in the future.
Absolutely. That'd be great. Any, any questions for Crystal? At this point? Okay, good. Crystal, but thanks a lot again. And yeah, please, we keep in touch. And, you know, let's, let's see, next time we will have the, the new chairs give us the report. And let's hear from them as well.
Fantastic. Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thanks for your service.
Anytime.
Thank you. Have a good evening, you too. Bye bye.
Thank you. Bye bye.
Thanks a lot, Crystal. Bye bye. Okay, so next, I see Eduardo just joined. Eduardo, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yeah, absolutely. So the floor is yours. Please go ahead.
Hold on a second. Let me see. Okay, you hear me? Okay.
You're very faint. You're very faint.
Yes. Yeah, but if you could turn up the volume somehow or get closer to the mic or something like that.
I'm using here a funny thing. I don't know if you can hear me. Okay.
From my end, it's okay, actually.
Let me check. Let me check where I'm getting my, my, my. Hold on a second. Now, can you hear me better?
Yes, definitely. Thank you. It's much better.
Getting the mic from somewhere else. I don't know. I have like five mics here. Anyhow, I have a slide deck that I want to use. I think you're going to pass them while I go through them?
Kevin, Kevin will drive them.
Okay, so if you can put it first.
It disappeared, actually.
By the way, thank you so much for inviting me today to present and talk to you about the Advisory Council Steering Committee.
Eduardo for joining. Absolutely.
Thank you. First of all, good morning, good afternoon, and good evening to all of the trustees. I'm Eduardo Diaz. And for those that do not know me, I currently live in Puerto Rico. And I was one of the 40 founders of the Puerto Rico Chapter. We were chartered in 2001. Today, I'm here as the Chair of the ISOC Chapter Advisory Council Steering Committee Chair to talk about, if you can pass to the next slide, about the following things. For the benefit of the new members, I'm going to start introducing the nine members of the steering committee, some who may be connected at this moment or not. I invited them. I will briefly go over the nomenclature that we as the council use. So when you hear CHAC, full CHAC, SC, you know what that means. And also, we will go over the process on how we develop advice in the council and the interaction between the council, the delegates, the steering committee, the board. And the, I'm going to finalize with a presentation of an update on the latest advice and the, some of the advices that we're working on. So there are nine members in the committee. Six members are elected, and these elections happen every year in November. And so now we're setting off for the next cycle. The terms are only for one year. Six of the members are elected, each from one region. So for example, I am from the Latino-American region, the Puerto Rico chapter. There's Olivier on the UK chapter for Europe, Satish Babu on the Asian Pacific region, Wazanai Lubu from the Zimbabwe, Pierre-Jeanne Canada, Quebec, and Nabil Boukhalid from Middle, from the Middle East. So those are six members that are elected from, we got the most votes from the region. And then the rest of the people that were the candidates, they are ranked in a descending order. And we get the three more. It doesn't matter where region they are from, and three more who got the most votes. And it's interesting that this year, we got four people from the Latino-American area, because I am from, I was as a regional one, I'm from, from the Latino-America. But the other three are also from, from Latino-America. That means that there was a lot of participation in voting in that region, I believe. For most, probably that's what happened. But in any case, we represent the community. So let's go to the next slide to talk to you about someone in the nomenclature that we have. Obviously, when we say CHAC, C-H-A-C, we mean the Chapter Advisory Council. It means everyone, you know, all the delegates, the steering committee, everyone that is in the council. Now, when we use the full CHAC, and this is, I don't know where this came from, because that's, I guess, those are the, these are the things that people use every, every, every year, most of the time. But the full CHAC is, we refer with that only the delegates. And the delegates are those people that get appointed or elected, you know, everyone has their own procedure, into the council. So when we say full CHAC, it's that. It's not the delegate plus the steering committee. And I will explain the difference between the two of them. So when we say CHAC SC, we mean the nine members of the steering committee. And those three things get all mixed up somehow. So I wanted to make sure that you understand when you read something with a full CHAC or CHAC SC or the CHAC, what that means. And also, we define our buys with the following format. That's the last bullet. And basically, we did it this way so we can have a distinctive, distinctive ID to the advice. So when we refer to an advice, it's that advice and not an advice that have similar titles. So we use month, a date, and a dash 01, 02, 03, which means, you know, if we, if we created three advices one day, you know, we started working on them and we create this document, that's it, you know, we'll have dash one, dash, that's 01, that's 02, that's 03, and so forth. And the date that you see there doesn't mean that that's the day that we transmit the advice to the board. That's important because people get confused. This is the date that we created the document that we started working on, okay? Because, you know, this could have been, we have advice that we created like three or four months ago, and we have been working on it. And then when we transmitted, it might be six months later. So you will see a difference there. But the main point is that you get that, you get to see that, that specific ID. So you can refer to it by that number. So next, next slide, please. So the Chapter Advisory Council is an advisory body allowed on the section two of the ISOC law. I believe it was chartered and recognized by the WHO as an advisory board sometime in 2015, but I'm not sure about the exact year when it was. And I may be wrong here. So if anyone can correct me, you know, I can correct that part of this story. Its primary purpose, and I'm paraphrasing here, is to channel and facilitate advice and recommendations to and from the president and the board of trustees of the Internet Society in a bottom-up manner. The CHAC, or the Chapter Advisory Council, can provide advice on matters of concerns or interest to the chapter community. So we don't advise on behalf of other communities within, within the ISO family. Another important purpose is to facilitate enhanced communications and collaboration between chapters, the trustees, ISO staff, and other members of the ISO community. So in other words, we are kind of the steering committee. It's kind of an official voice of the chapter community. And as you see in the, on the left side, and the channel goes from the chapter community, the chapter delegates, and then the chapter delegates will get issues. But that doesn't mean, that doesn't preclude for a chapter to come to us and provide any issues or concerns that they have. So it's, so there's some consultation going, no, the previous one. I'm, I'm finished with that. Okay. There's some consultation going between the steering committee and the chapter delegates and the, and the chapter community. The consultation that we do is with the council. And it is to, once we have developed an advice, we ask them to provide us feedback on that advice, on a draft. Then we make a final document, and then we put it out there for a consensus call. If somebody objects to the consensus, then we go into a vote. And that's what happened to the latest advice, as there were a couple of chapters that objected to the process, and then we went into a vote. But we tried to do this in consensus. So we, the steering committee, were more like an administrative type thing that we managed the process. But we don't, we don't approve anything. It's the council that does that. Next, please. Here, we can see the reaction between the chapter SC and the board. We send advice to the board, and, and more recently, during a recent meeting with Gonzalo, Sara and Andrew, we reached some kind of agreement that any advice that goes that we want to send to the foundation, it will go through the ISO board. That is what is dotted there, because we are not chartered to do this, send advice to the ISO foundation. But you know, there are some chapters that want to contribute with ideas and, you know, and have concerns about, about them. And the consultation part here between the board and the steering committee is different from what we have with the council. The consultation goes both ways. We send advice to the board, but the board is, can consult us and, you know, and when I'm saying us, it's the chapter community or any concern that they, you know, any feedback they want to get about anything, they can go through us, and then we will proceed to consult the chapters. So far, as far as I know, that has never happened before. But the channels, you know, part of the charter is there that it's a two-way communication there on that consultation. Does that consultation is different from the consultation that we do with the council? Next slide. On the left, is the chapter, this has to do with the advice. How is, how is, we develop very fast, how we develop advice. The chapter community is on the left, and that includes the council. It's implicit there. And then they, you know, this, they bring issues to the steering committee. We evaluate them. And usually, what we do is we create an ad hoc group that'll do the kind of a deep dive, the due diligence, and find out if there's really something, recommendation that needs to be put together. And if they decide that yes, then there is a draft document that's sent back to the council, the full CHAC for comments. It comes back, we, you know, we look at the comments, we incorporate the ones that make sense. And then we put it back as a final document for consensus, for the consensus call or voting, whatever, whatever, you know, would of the two. We, we try to do that on, on context. So the next one, please. So this is, I'm, these are the last two slides that I have. And these are the latest advices that we sent so far. We haven't sent anything after this one, but we have something that are, you know, we're looking ahead. I'm going to show you some that we are preparing. Advices, that's two and that's zero three, were kind of generated from the first one when they was being developed. And basically, these recommendations are to making ISO more bottom-up, transparent, consultative. The Dodge Zero Three recommendation asks for the creation of a working group to look into ISO bylaws. The, you know, all this has to do with the cells of the PIR, which left a bad taste in the mouth sort of on the chapter community. And I understand the board took action on number three and created this, this group of, that will, will look into this. And then, let's go to the next one. We will have the, what is coming in the pipe. There are one recommendation that, or solution, you know, or recommendation that we're sending, that we're working on that has to do with the opt-ins and now opt-outs in the membership database. You know, we consider those that would, you know, if you, if you want to become a member of an organization, it's suspected for you to get information about that organization. If you are allowed to be opt-out when you become a member, then you don't receive anything. There is no communication between that member and the organization. So why becoming a member? So we're looking into ways of fixing that or recommendation, or solution for that. And the second one, it's not really a, a, an advice, but it is that we are looking at our charter and we're making changes. There are no major changes, except for one that I think is important. But that has to do with fixing typos, making things more clear. And there's an ad hoc group that is working on that. And it's been, a webinar is being prepared to, you know, tell the full check about what the changes are. So that will, that will come later on. And, and the most important change is that to make changes to the charter. Right now, you have to have a meeting like this with two-thirds of the membership. I mean, you're talking about two-thirds of the membership of the whole chapter, which right now is around 123, 125. And in that meeting, it has to be approved. Obviously, they're the ones that people that cannot attend, they can send proxies. But still, you are obligated to have a meeting like this, to do the actual voting on it. And we're changing that to leave the two-thirds. It's okay, because I think major changes to the, you know, charter changes need a majority, a super majority. But I was going to say, but for the, the having, having been obligated to do a meeting like this for voting, we don't think that's efficient enough. We can do this electronically. So that's an important change, basically, that of these things that we are doing there. It's here because it has to go to the board to get approved. You know, once we submit these changes and we get the approval from the full check, we're going to submit for you, for your own, you know, for approvals. And the last one is one that has to do with the bold access to membership information. You know, there is no way now that a chapter can download a membership roster for whatever reason. So there's a way you can do that in the normal system. You could do it before, but not now. We have been told that this has to do with the GDPR. But look, I am inside the European Union. I am in Puerto Rico. I don't do any business with the European Union. And, and we're local to Puerto Rico. And like me, there are many chapters like that. I'm not talking about the ones that are within the European Union. And I know by one case, the UK, Olivier is, is very concerned about that too, because there's somehow, there are bylaws or something in the UK law has to do, you know, has to do something with the membership. But he's not here to explain what it is. But then, so we're looking into that and providing recommendations on how to do this. And, and I don't know if there's a legal thing behind this. But you know, if we don't do something about this, this is going to obligate many chapters to move their membership rosters into their own databases where they can manage and, and do things with it. It's not something that we want to do, but I see it coming. Because otherwise, you know, you don't have, you don't have the data yourself. So in any case, that's, that's there. I don't want to deal, you know, to delve into the, the advice itself, you know. And by the way, all the advices have at the end a table that tells you the transmitter, when the document was created, what happened, you know, when it was evolved, when it was commented. And so you have the whole process there on how it went through until it gets to you. So with that, I, I'm done. I'm finished. Sorry for taking some time.
Thank you, Eduardo. And thanks for the introduction, because we have some new trustees. So I think it's useful to, to introduce the nomenclature and the algorithm you have for naming documents and, and all that. And one thing is like, I didn't know you called the chapter advisory council CHAC, CHAC, you know.
C-H-A-C.
No, no, I understand that. But I didn't know you guys pronounce it like that. So I'll start.
Like a small check, right?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Like when you want us to write you a check.
Yeah, we have to do one in my, you know, with the Spanish, we are very phonetic.
Yeah, yeah.
We say it. So it sounds, I don't want to tell you how we say it, how I can, you know, I ask for a piece of paper, you know, it's, it's very difficult.
Okay, okay, good.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Eduardo. Thank you. I, I guess some trustees, they have some questions. So I see Mike, I see Richard. So Mike, then Richard.
I just want to mention that the, that there's a Mayan, the Mayan rain god is CHAC. So, so it turns out that if we want, you know, I think that we are elevate, whenever we call the, the chapter's advisory committee CHAC, I always think of we're praying for rain. But
Okay, that's interesting. Thank you, Mike. Richard, please.
I have any divine references here. Nearly a process question. So Eduardo, thank you for the refresher, even for us continuing trustees. It's useful to get, you know, a clear, clear view on the processes here. It seems clear that we've evolved kind of a multi-tiered process that has some complexity to it. And I was wondering, like, if you thought that, that we were really benefiting from that complexity, or whether some, some work in the, perhaps in the government reform work here to, to develop a more direct, a more, you know, the process that doesn't have quite all the layers of intermediation might, might kind of facilitate some conversations, results in more transparency, more visibility, more participation.
You're talking about our process?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, it, it sounds complicated, but it's, it's, you know, it's not that, that complicated. Because in, in fact, we don't have a process that is written down. I'm just putting it in some kind of graphical forms. You understand that, you know, the, the idea behind what I was saying is that, you know, we don't do this on a, you know, the steering committee doesn't do things on, on, you know, there's, there's, there's some kind of process in there that we try to keep. It's not, you know, like, you know, we do it like this and that. They're like, you know, we get mails all the time about concerns about this, ideas about that. So we take those and, and we work on them. It's not that we go back and say, you know, can we do this or that? So it sounds complicated, but it's, but it's not, believe me, it's not, it's not. I made it to look complicated, but it's not.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Richard. Thank you, Eduardo. So next is Olga. Olga, please.
Thank you. Gracias, Eduardo. How are you?
Como no?
One question, sorry. Sintonizing Spanish. How do you, when, when you meet among yourselves and in the, in the advisory committee, how do you interact with the rest of the chapter's community?
Oh, I forgot to tell you, we, we meet every month, the steering committee. And then every quarter, every three, around every three months, we bring the full check. And then we have a meeting, and then we present to them, you know, the same, more or less the same thing that I presented today. You know, we're working on this. And then, you know, we have a, if we have something final to approve, we approve it there. And, you know, like, for example, these chapter changes, it's one thing that we are preparing a webinar to explain the full check, what the changes are. So when they're ready to comment on the document, they know what we're talking about. And then when we come back to them for approval, they know what we're talking about. So, so we have a, you know, fairly good communication. However, you know, when you have this meeting, you don't see, you know, you see twenty chapters participating or, or less. And you can see also a, a participation in the, when you have a voting like last time, but that's, that's, that's not the same one. But usually, it's very, it's a very low voting process. In fact, their chapters, they haven't had, they don't have any delegates selected. Even though we added that part, you know, if we want to be like a, one of getting one of those nice badges for gigabit chapter, or if you don't have a delegate, you know, one of the points that you have a delegate designated to the chapter, and there are chapters that they don't have one. I say, you know, how difficult it is to appoint somebody to be a delegate to a council. You know. But yeah, we've, we have, with, you know, we communicate with the full check all, you know, whenever we need to communicate. I mean, we want to bombard it with that, with, you know, with too many emails. But, and, you know, people are, people are aware of what we're doing. And so, and all, our, our work is, you know, visual. We don't get together. There is no need for that. So that's it. And, you know, I, I, you know, Gonzalo and I talk regularly just to keep everybody abreast of what's happening, you know? So there are no surprises here. I mean, the, the whole idea of this council is to make everything better. You know, and, and having a channel, official channel going back and forth is a great thing to have. I mean, I mean, anybody can call you or send you an email. That's not, that doesn't preclude you from doing that. But because of this process, which is not complicated, Richard, this, this process makes it more, you know, making sure that what you get is something that was the chapter approving them. It's not something that we, you know, came out from somebody's mind and, and send it to you.
Hey, Eduardo. Another question? Next, next on the line was Maimuna. Maimuna, please.
Thank you, Gonzalo. Thank you, Eduardo. I think Olga raised a part of my question. I, when I, when I, the, the structure of the, of the full check is, I think, kind of top-down or top, I don't know. It's from the, the chapter community to, to the check. It's one way for giving and sharing information. My, my questions, first of all, how could you be sure that all the chapter have, have a representative? In Senegal, for example, we have one representative on the, on the check. But it's, one thing is having a representative on the check, another thing is having the feedback of what's going on on the check. And how do you, how do you make sure that you, you go back to chapters? And how, that is the, the first, the second question. And I have third one. How do you, how do you tackle with diversity? Because we have several chapters around the world, and there's a lot of people in there. How do you, how do you, how do you be sure that you will get all those in, input from all the chapters? Thank you.
Well, first of all, the, the delegates are appointed by the chapters. We don't, we don't tell them, you know, and I know staff has constantly asking people, you know, to, to have chapters, to have delegates. And the chapters, you know, approve them, you know, they do their own procedure of election. Now, the, the, the responsibility of the, of the, of the delegate is to give, you know, to provide information from the chap, from their chapter, if there is a concern, and bring it to us, and vice versa. You know, like, if we, for example, the charter changes, you know, it's, it's a responsibility of that delegate to go back to their, you know, board or their membership and say, look, the charter of this is changing. What do you think? You know, what comments you can put in. There are some chapters that do that. They actually do that. The San Francisco chapter is one that does it. And I know there are other chapters that they, they take that back to their membership. And, and, and sometimes they wait for the membership to vote, you know, like, like, for the advisor. But that's their, that's a very rare chapters that not, I don't know how many there are, but there are very few that do that. And what happens is, is there is no feedback sometimes back into the, into the, into the chapter, and vice versa. It doesn't come to us. But there's nothing we can do, other than, than trying to, to keep asking people and telling them that we're here for you. And, 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 you know, and, and what else? Because that's, 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 you know, we are not, they're constantly telling people that they have to do this and that. But we make sure, for example, that we created this, you know, I helped in, in creating this badge-in system, you know, like gigabits and so, and so forth of the chapters. Because we wanted to make sure that one of the items there, you know, if you want to really be at the top of the chapters, you have to have a delegate. Which is not, is not complicated to have it. Now, once that person is there, then they, they should be able to do this back and forth. I don't know if I answered all of your questions. I'm not sure about the diversity part. My, my.
Yeah, my question is, we, we have several chapter around the world. How do you, how do you, how could you be sure that you are, what your, your, your opinion is the opinion of the most of the chapter? Do you have a quorum? Do you have kind of that? And also, on the diversity issue, do you have any, you know, kind of rule of diversity? If you have, you know, fifty, fifty percent from Latin American, or twenty percent from Africa, or, you know, depend of the number of the chapter who are involved on. Because you, you are supposed to represent the whole chapter around the world. So you are the voice of the chapter. How could you be the voice of the chapter if most of the chapter are not part of this? That's my question.
Okay, well, the, the, the steering committee, like I say, six members are coming from, one from each region, get selected from one region. So for, from Africa, you know, everybody votes from somebody candidate from one of the chapters in, in Africa, you know, and, and the Latino-American and so forth. So six of the people there are, you know, come from, from, from each region. So that's how you get the representation from the chapters in the, to the steering committee. And the other three are non, non, non-geographical. I don't know the reason for that, other than maybe nine is the perfect number, and nine being an odd number allows you to and nine being an odd number allows you to have a vote, not a, which is, you know, yes or no, you don't have a, you know, a 50/50 type thing. You have 50 plus ones always, if all of them both. Diversity, you know, each chapter is independent. So each chapter have their own by rules and they select people to their board. And the membership is, you know, we don't do anything with that. And I believe ISO doesn't do that either in terms of saying that, you know, all the chapters have their own, they are their own, they are independent within that respect. And having diversity in the steering committee is something that comes with the people that, I mean, diversity in terms of, you know, female, male, no, no regional. It depends who the candidates are, you know? And it's an election process. So it's not like they get appointed, they are elected by the chapters. More or less like the board is, you know, in terms of the process. We cannot hear you, Gonzalo.
Yeah, I usually leave it unmuted, but this time I muted. I was saying that, thanks Eduardo, I was thanking you. Any further questions? Just, it's worthwhile that, you know, George has actually expressed interest in the individual members and you mentioned that, Eduardo. So at some point, you know, we, I mean, not now because we don't have time, but probably, you know, it would be good to actually loop George in. And I know that Olga is in the queue. So Olga and then George briefly, and then we will wrap up. So Olga, please.
Thank you very briefly and thank you, Gonzalo. I think that you have many participants in the steering committee from Latin America. It's not by chance. It's because of the staff doing a great job there. Because Nancy is constantly reminding chapters what they have to do. They have to vote, they have to be present. So that is very important. So it's not by chance that you have many people from the region. Of course, they do apply and they do participate, but she reminds them constantly. And she's constantly in the communication. So staff plays a very important role there.
Thank you, Olga.
Excellent. Thank you. George, please.
Thank you. I share some of the things that Maya said and that Olga has said also in terms of membership. And I know that there's a membership initiative coming up. So I'm really relegating myself to listening and thinking about the issues rather than participating at this point.
That's perfect. Yeah, we will make sure to loop you in because, I mean, this is kind of, you know, also your interest, you have expressed interest in that, so I think it's good. And individual members, I mean, it's something that we've been thinking about for a long time. So I think it's high time that we do something about it.
But what are individual members? I'm not sure what that is. Individual members?
Yeah, no, I mean, you talk about membership at the beginning and we are looking at everything in a, let's say, holistic way, just to make sure that, you know, everybody is represented.
Okay.
Okay, Eduardo, thanks a lot. Again, I'm apologizing to all speakers for making you work over the weekend. And by the way, you have probably seen, I sent to the chat list, now I'm going to call it like that, an email explaining that, you know, we're going to be kicking off the working group, the Governance Reform Working Group in September, right after the August vacation. So just to give you a heads up and we'll take it from there.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thanks a lot, Eduardo.
Thank you, everyone, for having me.
Take care.
And remember, every time you hear the check.
We will think of you. Thank you, Eduardo. Ciao. Bye-bye. Okay, good. So now we're gonna have a break. So Kevin, you can stop the recording.
Okay, we're recording now. You're gonna drive the slides?
Kevin, you are muted. So welcome back. This is after the break and now we're gonna have the CEO report. So Andrew, the floor is yours.
Thank you. All right, so this is a report from me to the board about a couple of different things. First, I'm going to talk a little bit about the staff structure that we started at the beginning of the year. And then we're going to talk a little bit about the state of play with the action plan for this year. So I want to remind you, we're doing this in open session. But the first part of that, you can go to the next slide, please, Kevin. The first part of this is based on a report that you all have. But that report is confidential because it contains enough detail in some cases that people would be able to identify somebody or whatever. And, you know, that would be inappropriate to publish widely. So I've been pretty careful in this, not to, you know, not to step over that. But if you have questions, because we're an open session, you know, we have to be careful to talk at general levels. And if you have specific questions, perhaps you can note those and we can have a discussion about that during the closed session if need be. Next slide, please. So the top-line thing about this is that we have a generally positive assessment of the way that the structure is, but there are some adjustments needed. And I want to talk a little bit about that today. Next, please. So I don't know if you all remember this, but last year we decided to change the structure of the Internet Society to arrange ourselves according to areas of focus rather than sort of departments. So historically, we were arranged in functional departments. And the difficulty with that was that both policy and technical priorities were split between the, you know, sort of global policy and technical areas and the regional focus. And so nobody ultimately was responsible for any initiative that we had. And also because of this split, you had people who were working on the technology and people working on the policy, just for instance. And the problem is that all of the things that are interesting to the Internet Society live at the nexus of the policy and technology interaction. And so it was very difficult to make, you know, to make progress on our areas of priority. So we came up with this approach that sorts the organization basically into four chunks. One chunk is a fairly conventional organizational piece, business operations. Another chunk has to do with external interaction and so on. You can go to the next slide. There's a little bit of a zoom in here. So, you know, one is the business operations. Another, strategy, communications and engagement, it's really to do with how we interact with people who are not part of the organization, strictly speaking, the staff organization. So our community, but also external communities. This is where training and communications and so on lives. We have then, in what you'll sometimes hear as the north. And the reason for this north and south and all is because when I originally drew this up to explain it to people, I drew it on four points of the compass to try to show how these things clustered together. Unfortunately, that language has settled in. It's, you know, yet another example of how, you know, careless use of a term one time will doom you to use that term forever. In any case, we have another office that is resource and skill management. And this is where project staff are located. That is where their functional, you know, their line management lives in the Office of Resource and Skill Management. And then there are two areas that we organize staff projects. All of the projects that we do are organized under the rubric of Internet growth or of the strong Internet. So those are the two things, the two areas into which we have organized things. And basically, this works such that people who are in other parts of the organization are assigned to projects in these departments rather than them being first-class departments. So people are not part of the Internet growth staff or part of the strong Internet staff. Instead, they're part of the Internet Society staff and then we're working on these things. And we shift people around according to the talents that we need to bring to bear on various things. The people in the double circles there, Internet growth, strong Internet, Office of CFO and Business Operations, Strategy, Communications and Engagement, and the Office of Resource and Skill Management, that is the senior executive team. Those are people who report directly to me. Also on here are represented in sort of, you know, small, in the small board liaison, obviously, another important function, and the Internet Society Foundation. But those are parts of the support of this organization. And what we're really talking about today is the function that causes the organization to deliver on its action plan. Just to be clear, the Senior Vice President for Internet Growth is Jane Coffin. For Strong Internet is Joe Hall. Our CFO and Business Operations, you spoke to earlier today, Sandy Specter. Strategy, Communications and Engagement is led by Rinalia Abdul-Rahim. And the Office of Resource and Skill Management is led by Sally Wentworth. Next, please. Now, this evaluation was one that I committed to do when we undertook this. But this is a management evaluation. It's looking from the point of view of the senior executive team, is this working? We set this up around questions of performance orientation, the dynamic talent model, organizational flexibility and, you know, sort of other catch-all observations. But those were really the top three things. This therefore is not an evaluation that is based on objective criteria in the usual sense. Those will come from, you know, whether we meet our budget commitments, whether we meet our commitments in the action plan. We have a plan for a staff survey late in the year. So those are other things that will be coming. This is really about, okay, should we, you know, we're six months into this. Should we continue with this or do we need to make radical changes? Next, please. So the reason we think this is largely working is because it appears to be achieving many of the things that we set out to do. We do see activities developing across the organization. I have an example mentioned here. We also see some collaboration on measurement and evaluation of the activities that the organization undertakes. We've got quite a bit of flexibility in face of the changed realities. The organization responded pretty effectively, I thought, to COVID-19. And I thought that was a good test. And we've got some significant public successes already. And a good example of this is the way we managed to get the whole organization to support the Global Encryption Coalition, which, you know, was a significant success. So I think in all of these areas and in some more that we'll talk about in a few minutes, we can see some, you know, some ways in which this is working. Next, please. There are some challenges and I don't want to minimize these because I think, you know, these are top-level ones and we'll see some challenges in each of the areas that we set out to fix. One thing that I want to point out is that the transaction with PIR, that the timing of that could not have been any worse. We had already announced that we were doing this. We'd started down this path when we were approached by Ethos. I told you about this at the time. Everybody recognized that we were going to do that. I have to give a lot of thanks to the staff for digging in and, you know, completing this anyway, despite the fact that the organization was, you know, paying a lot of attention to some other things as well. There are still some top-level issues that sometimes we trip over. We've still got some jobs that are an awkward fit. We made, you know, essentially a complete transformation of the organization and not everything worked perfectly. So there are some job descriptions that probably need to be tidied up a little bit in order to get things to fit well. We still have a bunch of issues to do with communication and making priorities clear. That really needs to be improved still. It's not too surprising. This is a big change and it takes some time. We've also got some old habits. So people worked together in particular organizational structures for a long time and those things don't change overnight. So you have to, you know, we have to continue to work on the new habits. Next, please. So there were a whole bunch of top-line things that I identified early on as issues that I wanted any new structure to improve. And I think that we can see in these cases, we've got ways in which it's working and ways in which it's not. The first of these was financial understanding. One of the things that has been observed more than once is that, you know, historically, the Internet Society's up-to-date reporting about exactly what people are working on and how the expenditure on the staff, for instance, relates to the project work that we're doing, that's not always as clear as it might be. And that is something that is really coming out of this. We're starting to see some motion on that. So that's good news. We still got some work to do on this. I don't want to pretend that it's all, you know, all fixed. But I think that we still do have some work to do. But I believe that this trend isn't going in the right direction. Next, please. We had a problem in the past that because the, because staff were bound to a functional area, it was difficult to get staff who had talent, you know, related to some particular thing that we're trying to do, well-aligned with doing that thing. So what we have seen is that this really does give us a mechanism by which we can identify the skills that are going to be needed for any given area of work. And then we can determine whether we have the skills or whether we need to get them or train them up or something like that. We also have a really good way now of identifying places in which we don't have quite enough people working on a thing. A good example of this has come up recently where we've needed, you know, particular linguistic skills in some areas of the world. And we're a little shorthanded on that. And I think historically, that wouldn't have been quite as obvious. We do still have a problem that there are some staff that are oversubscribed. And as I mentioned before, not everything fits, you know, really tightly. There's another thing that I will say about the staff organization. And that is because of the longstanding way in which things were organized, there was a tendency of people to wonder, who knows something? That is, who do I ask to get something done? Rather than to have the organization have mechanisms and procedures by which various issues can be engaged with. And so we have to make that in the way we think about these things. And that is something that I believe this organizational structure is helping to do, but we still have to get there. Next, please. An important part of success has to do with whether we produce things that are on time and on budget. We do have positive indicators here. It's going to be very difficult to evaluate this really effectively this year. COVID-19 threw everything up in the air. So, you know, if you made really detailed plans in October of last year, October and November, you know, by March, things looked very different. And that means that being held really strictly to that is difficult. But I still think there are positive indicators. We do still have, and look, this is not a unique thing to the Internet Society, right? Time tracking and estimation are problems that bedevil every organization I've ever heard of. And, you know, the Internet Society also needs to improve in this area. So this is something that we're working on. Next, please. One of the questions that we were facing with the previous structure was a concern about mobility among the staff. You know, historically, the organization was quite small and it grew quite rapidly for a period of time. And so we do have, we had a period in which it looked like a very great place to have a lot of dynamic talent movement. But we're not in the position of super-growth anymore. And this means that, you know, there aren't maybe as many opportunities for career growth. And so the question was, how do we structure the organization so that that growth can happen anyway? And what we've seen is that this structure provides people with a number of those opportunities. We've managed to uncover talents that people had that were partly hidden. And there's a greater training and career path here. And so some people are really embracing that and taking advantage of it. There are people who would prefer to have a traditional management path in their career. And this organizational structure is pretty flat, actually. So it's designed not to create a lot of management hierarchy. And so people who really want a management hierarchy job and that's what they're looking for, some of them are, of course, not too pleased about this structure. And there are just people who haven't accepted the new structure because change is hard and we can observe that. We do still, as I mentioned before, have some oversubscribed people and that's very, very hard on them. And so we need to cope with that urgently. Next, please. We needed to have a faith in information flow. You know, we've commented on this more than once within the board. I think it's true across the Internet Society that there is a general concern to make sure that everybody is involved. And I think that we do have, we are seeing much better reporting, a much better ability to describe efforts. Because if you need to describe a project in terms of what the outcomes are going to be in order to figure out who needs to be on it, then, you know, your first step is already solved as soon as you conceive of the project. Um, and we've had really very good regular sharing of information, and so that's creating a virtuous circle. Um, it's still the case, however, and this this is always the um, this is always the issue when when you're dealing with any kind of uh, um, thing that involves communities. Um, there there is the tendency sometimes to mistake collaboration for involving everybody, you know, everybody who times the right answer is to get a small team to work on something first and then um, uh, and then, you know, build on that. Uh, and and we still don't completely have that um, that mindset in all cases. Some some of the teams really got it, um, others are having some uh, some trouble with that shift. Um, we do still have problems with information tools. I think the um, uh, I think the collaboration tools at the Internet Society uh, are 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 being worked on. We're we're having good success there, but we don't have them today. There is one more thing that I'm a little reluctant about, and I I sort of um, hinted at this at the at the beginning about the um, uh, you know, north and south and so on. Uh, there's a danger that any structure can become a new silo in which people don't communicate outside of that. Um, and the uh, the current travel restrictions and so on tend to discourage the sort of informal um, uh, collaboration that you get in offices and the like. And so I think we are, you know, we we need to keep our eye on that. I'm not saying that that's a problem, but I think we need to keep our eye on it. Uh, next, please. Uh, the, another thing that we were really concerned about um, had to do with the reputation of the Internet Society for effectiveness. Uh, one of the difficulties that I think we have um, been, you know, frank about um, in 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 previous meetings is that not every thing that we've ever done has has produced very clear outcomes. And I think that what we're seeing uh, in the current uh, environment is is really positive development, that we're getting very clear developments and collaboration that we have with people that um, that show the value of the organization. We got very good feedback on the action plan in December, in the middle of a very serious controversy. People were still quite positive about the action plan. Um, we got um, uh, we got some modest gain in org member numbers, although the revenue is down. Um, but if we can attract more people, um, you know, a bigger coalition is still a bigger coalition, and that's usually a sign that people think that you're doing something useful. Uh, we still got uh, some reputational issues. I know we're going to talk about a a little bit about communications later on in closed session. Um, but yet, uh, there there are still some reputational issues, and I think it would be foolish to ignore those. Next, please. So as you see, um, you know, my view is that there's
Is it just me, or we just lost Andrew?
Yeah, we lost Andrew.
Work. Uh, and something has just come on.
Andrew.
You posed about sixty seconds ago.
Yeah.
Okay, is it back?
Yes.
All right. Um, so is there something you need me to go over, or is that enough?
Rewind sixty seconds.
Beginning of this slide.
Uh, the beginning of this slide, okay. Um, so all I was saying was, uh, to sum up, you know, that um, uh, overall, we're going to stick with the um, with the structure that we have. There are some some minor adjustments that we'll make to uh, some parts of the organization in order to make sure that we are able to deliver on the projects, on the budget, and and so on. Um, so unless there are questions specific to the um, the org um, structure, then I think we'll move on to the next piece, but I'm okay to take um, uh, questions on this if you want to do that first.
Um, do we have any questions? So far, I don't see any. So just just go ahead.
Okay, uh, so um, we'll go on to the action plan. Uh, next, please. And I guess the slide after this. Um, so in your in your pack in the um, uh, in the um, in Board Effect is a really, really complete half year report. Um, I I mean, I I I hope you've all looked at it, but it's it's very detailed. Um, and uh, you know, I have to thank the staff for um, for putting that together. This, uh, I'm not going to go through that in detail. This is really just to talk at at the very high level uh, in order to highlight some things that I think are important themes from the point of view of the board. Uh, next, please. Uh, again, I want to thank the um, uh, thank the the dedicated strategy and impact measurement and planning and reporting staff. Um, they did a whole lot of work on this. Um, that's, that is a yet another example of within the organization that we now have that in the past we didn't always have. And so it's it's become much easier. It's not perfect yet, but it's become much easier to get a picture of what is going on across the organization. And I think that that is something that, you know, the Internet Society can build on um, eh, in in the future. Um, I really focused in this case about activities with targets outside of the staff. So um, this is about stuff that the world is seeing the Internet Society doing rather than stuff that the Internet Society is doing itself. So the detailed management report stuff is all in the, is all in inside the the pack, but I figured that the things that you're most interested in are the stuff that is is publicly visible. Next, please. Uh, so uh, you'll remember that the um, projects are divided into um, into Internet Growth and Strong Internet. And so um, that's the 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 organizational structure of the next few parts. So these are the projects that are about Internet growth. And the first of these is about community networks. Um, we were really nervous at the beginning of the year when it became obvious that we were going to start seeing very serious travel restrictions because it's very, very difficult to do support of people um, to connect them to the Internet remotely because they're not connected to the Internet. Um, and so um, we were quite concerned that this was going to be an area that was really going to suffer, and I'm very pleased to say that we've had um, good luck anyway. We have good um, connections with people um, in, uh, you know, in in our partner organizations. And um, so so we're having uh, having some uh, continued success there. Um, we've also had uh, because people are paying attention to the value that the Internet um, has right now. What we're seeing is that Internet stories are, you know, they get more attention. So for instance, there was a a really great um, story that showed up in Argentina, and the um, the network provider that was providing connectivity to a community network said, oh, I didn't know it was that important, and increased the connectivity that was available to them um, just by reading a newspaper article. So um, this is the sort of uh, of thing this project has been able to do. Uh, the project has the ability to continue to get people involved. Um, we're we're having good um, luck with governments. We're having good luck with regulators. We're having good luck um, seeing actual policy changes in the field. Um, the G seven has mentioned it. Um, we've got also chapters and organizational members who are really, you know, uh, keen and excited about this work. And so this is one of the areas where we're seeing direct um, uh, in involvement in deployment, but also um, involvement in advocacy. And there's been a lot of interest in this topic, and so we've had a lot of education sessions as well with the community. Next, please. Uh, infrastructure and community development. Um, you will probably recognize this uh, as as the project that does a lot of IXP work. This is where the um, the large grant that we have, for instance, from Facebook on lives. Um, one of the um, big deals um, that that shows up here is that we've had a lot of outreach events. Um, a lot of people were um, paying attention to it. We had, you know, good, good attendance for trainees and and direct ben- um, benefit. Um, we've also had direct IXP development support in twelve countries across um, those four regions. Um, and this culminated in a uh, review report that was over eight years. Uh, this attracted some international media attention, so we've actually had, um, you know, good luck. This is a long term pattern um, where we can see really the Internet approach to things is is helping and that it's reducing costs. Um, the uh, report um, highlighted that this was um, saving millions of dollars um, in uh, in Africa, and it's a, it's a big deal for people who are, you know, ha- having to decide, do I spend that money on subsea cable transit? Or do I spend that money on things that I can do here within my, within my country or within the continent? Next slide, please. Uh, the last um, growth project is about measuring the Internet. And this is a project uh, that is intended to give us the capability to be a clearinghouse. That is, in, it's intended to to make ISOC the place where people can go as a one stop shop in order to understand what's going on on the Internet. There's a lot of measurement going on on the Internet. We don't need to reproduce all of that work, but it's very hard to get for policymakers and other people who are doing that. That's what this is about. So we've, we've signed some agreements, um, but this is all getting started, really. So the first half of the year was mostly, you know, running RFPs and and uh, starting um, the the work with Frontworks and writing down the use cases and so on. So look for more um, uh, work on this in the future. We have attracted quite a bit of attention, however, uh, um, through this project because uh, people keep coming to us to ask, you know, is the Internet really melting down? And we can say that, say to them, no, it's not, and here I can prove it to you. So it's, you know, it's it's a hopeful sign for the future. Next slide, please. The the other projects that we're working on are to increase the strength of the Internet. Um, so the growth of the Internet is really just making it bigger, but the other problem that the Internet is facing right now is that a lot of people, um, you know, they've decided that they're not sure the Internet was such a good idea in the first place, and we're here to convince them that the Internet is a great thing and that it should be strong. Next, please. So we have a project on encryption. I feel very strongly that um, the current drift um, uh, in encryption policy discussions is extraordinarily dangerous for the Internet. Uh, we did manage to launch the Global Encryption Coalition with a number of partners. That's been uh, it, from my point of view, very successful. We've also had good um, uh, training events. We've had lots of um, uh, chapters involved. There were three languages represented. Uh, we got a lot of media uh, attention over the last little while as um, uh, as as some of the anti encryption stuff has uh, has ramped up, and we've had regional workshops that um, that have been quite successful, including this one in the Asia Pacific. Um, Keep Kids Safe Online had this huge um, uh, was was hugely attractive, and this is part of our key message. Because a lot of the time, what we hear about encryption is it is a a false dichotomy between safety on the one hand and privacy on the other hand. And what we're trying to do is break that mistake in thinking and remind people that privacy and security are part of the same problem, and that's a big part of the message that's being carried forward here. Next, please. We have another large project that is uh, that that was doing mostly insider work um, in the in the first half of the year. Um, and that's about the Internet way of networking. The the way that the Internet develops, uh, you know, using independent networks that are all working together using common protocols and so on, that is under attack. Uh, it's under attack by by corporations that basically would like to own the entire stack. It's under attack by international um, uh, standards development organizations that would like to um, you know, reinvent the old um, telephony type of system. It's under attack by governments who have figured out that this Internet thing, you know, puts uh, capabilities in the hands of of the endpoint that it's harder for them to control. So it's really been, it's it's really a a problem for the Internet Society. The Internet way is under attack, and so we have been working very hard internally. The staff have been working to prepare things and so on. There is a policy development project uh, process consultation going on right now uh, about the framework for this. So things will become quite a bit more visible in this project in the latter half of the year. Um, but already the debates around Section two thirty in the United States, eh, as well as um, uh, you know, similar discussions in other places, but um, in the United States, this has suddenly become a very, very hot item. And so it has drawn on these resources already, um, which allows us to test out whether our messages are effective at explaining what the issues are to people. Next slide, please. Mutually agreed norms for routing security. You'll have heard of this as Manners. Um, and this is an effort that really illustrates, actually, very nicely, the Internet way of networking. That is, a lot of people would like to fix routing by making government mandates for how to fix this or by telling people what to do or regulation or whatever. And instead, what we have been doing is saying, no, this is actually something that network operators can do by developing uh, things that they can test themselves. And so we built an observatory. Members of the Manners Project can look at um, the the behavior. And look, this is going to result in people making decisions about whether they trust routing announcements from other people. But that's the whole idea. Um, we just saw a routing leak that happened just the other day. The people who are are working on this project um, uh, produced an analysis of what happened very, very quickly. Um, we've had a lot of uh, increase in members over the last little while. I think the four hundred fifty members is now already outdated on their five hundred autonomous systems in all of the programs. Um, so we were really starting to see um, uh, this take off. And and I know that there have been historically some doubts about whether this thing was going to work. Uh, what we see is that if we put the right resources behind uh, these kinds of efforts and we develop a community around this effort, then the community begins to take off, and then it can run itself. Manners is an independent community. We're fostering it for the time being, but over time, we expect that the um, that this community will spin out of the Internet Society and not be a project of the Internet Society as such. Um, that's been the way the community has expressed their preferences to us. I see there's a question, so I'm happy to take it now, or live.
Ted, Ted, please.
Uh, I'm also happy to wait. It's actually on the previous uh, issue with the Internet way of networking. So if you want to take them at the end, I'm happy to do that, or if you want to go back.
No, go ahead.
So uh, historically, when you've described the Internet way of networking, you've you've tried to avoid the Internet Society becoming the everything society by really focusing the efforts of the group on other things which are critical to the Internet, remaining the Internet. Unfortunately, the attack surface for the Internet is is broad enough, and though interlocking pieces of it are sufficiently tightly bound, that a lot of the attacks we see um, from policymakers on the Internet look like they're an attack at a high level system, but in fact kind of reciprocate down, and I I wonder whether uh, that tight messaging, as valuable as it uh, appears to be in in retaining focus, is actually going to be perhaps missing some of the most critical attacks because they appear to be launched at 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 higher layers than the Internet way of networking itself. And I think the the fact that the Section two thirty debate in the US has drawn on these resources is a hint that there are a variety of these that are, you know, certainly above the internet working layer that are still critical to the Internet way of uh, sharing content across the network, of creating network effects out of the ability to build communities. And I just would like you to maybe tell us where your current set of that boundary is um, and how much you're willing to stretch it uh, to respond to uh, some of the changing ways in which policymakers are attacking here.
Oh, so there are sort of three answers to this. Um, uh, the first thing is that the PDP that has gone out, what one of the, one of the problems that I have observed, you know, first as a member and now as part of the staff of the uh, with with the way the Internet Society has approached some of these things, is that um, our inside baseball and our outside baseball voices were frequently the same one. Um, and so we would talk about stuff in terms that other people within our own community could understand, and we wouldn't always then do the second effort of taking that stuff that we all had an agreement about and turning it into something that could be comprehended easily by somebody who just didn't understand the distinctions that we were trying to make. And so the first thing that we have to do is be clear about this framework because it's part of our community. It's part of our policy development that we have to do. But what that means is that there there needs to be follow on work beyond this that is not, you know, we're not going to hand this framework over to policymakers in uh, in the US Congress or in Australia or in India or wherever. Uh, instead, what we have to do is um, uh, is is turn this into materials that are are then tailored to the local considerations at that time on the basis of the stuff that we have developed, that is the real policy. So that's the first piece. The second piece is that we need to understand that the 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 place at which the boundary lives is not, you know, part of the seven layer model. Um, that is, there there isn't, you know, there isn't a line that you can draw somewhere below the application layer that is the Internet Society's problem, and everything above that is just like, you know, somebody else's job. Because the real question is, is this part of internet working? That is, is this thing that we're talking about in this case, something that more stuff builds on top of, incorporates into another service and then builds on top of that? That's really the big story about the Internet, and it's an important part of what we have to put across in this. And I don't know that we're all the way there yet, but I think that that's um, that's a a critical piece of this. Because finally, that is why we need to engage with policymakers at at that layer. Because you're quite right, a lot of the time, what people think they're doing is, you know, just touching around the edges of a particular service, and what they're actually doing is And what they're actually doing is attacking very low level stuff. And we need to be able to make that clear to them, why, you know, why they're having this kind of consequence. It's a little bit like, you know, the the sort of side effects that frequently happen from other kinds of legislation that, you know, where people, you know, don't really understand what the consequences are. And and it's our job to make sure that policymakers understand those things. In some cases, they're going to do it anyway. But at least then we're in the position to to say, we think that's a bad idea. And here are the reasons why we think it's a bad idea. Or we think that we understand your policy goal. And here's another way to do it without wrecking stuff. And if we can provide those kinds of those that kind of information to policymakers, then I think we'll be doing our job. So I don't know if that answers your question, but I hope so.
It did. I think that there there's definitely some stuff that that's coming down the pike that it's very difficult to know whether it fits inside or outside the remit of ISOC as it stands right now. I I'm thinking, for example, of the Gaia X project coming out of Europe, which is to build a kind of new cloud infrastructure standards and practices that are certainly much more based in sovereignty, data sovereignty and similar issues than others, but are also kind of competitive behavior relative to existing standard of relative to existing cloud providers and are also somewhat efforts to make sure that metadata, which has historically been treated as, you know, proprietary, becomes open. And so there there's a bunch of pieces to that, some of which go along with the ability to build new systems on top of it, which you mentioned before, and some of which actually are efforts to create something which is competitive to things which already allow you to build things on top of it. And so given the current context we're in, where there's this generalized suspicion of 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 Internet substrates at a variety of levels, I I I hope it's something where the analysis by the by the Internet society of what's inside or outside their policy remit is at least somewhat generous right now. Because I think the the knock on effects are so broad and sometimes so deep when the policymakers are making them without really clear ideas that it it may be the fact that, you know, we stand up much more often than perhaps we absolutely need to. It makes sure that we don't miss those critical occasions when we did need to and misunderstood where the the knock on effects were going to be. And even though it's it's going to make those harried people a little bit more harried and going to be a little bit more expensive to do that, I still think that, given the place of the Internet society in this conversation, it may be something to to think about.
So just adding to, number one, I don't think it's a it's a much longer conversation than right now, but I agree with I agree with Ted. But I almost you can look at it from the flip side as well. Where what you see governments policymakers concerned about are at the upper layers. And their remedy, you know, so for example, the, you know, China Chinese new IP that we've talked about, they see the remedy actually at the internet working, right, at the lower layers. And they and and we would say, oh, you know, there's a mismatch and, you know, you have to worry about the consequence. I actually think some of them deeply understand the knock on effects, right? With and and they're doing this purposely. In other cases, you know, it's not I so I the general matter, though, I mean, responding to what Ted's saying, I do think we need to be generous in terms of the Internet way of networking as we think about it in terms of looking at, you know, the attacks on the fundamental Internet principles and the 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 goals and mission of of the Internet society and what is under attack more broadly. So we maybe we want to have a separate session at some point to address that and think it through. But I think this is extremely important. Point Ted makes is extremely important. And just to note, the staff that I've engaged with on this and some of the other things, Andrew, that you've presented have really stepped up and they're doing it. They're actually very aware and doing a great job.
Thank you, Pepper. I think Mike had a question.
Yeah, I let me, I just wanted to jump in and actually I think Pepper, I had a notion of supplementing some of the things that Ted said, but I think Pepper touched on it. So I'll just be brief and just say that I I do think policymakers are aiming at stuff either at upper levels of the stack or really outside the stack. I mean, there are aspects of law and policy that are just outside the stack. But because of what they are seeking or what they think they want, which may which may also be what they really want, it has impact all the way down, you know, or has impact deeper into the stack in order to implement that. So that we are put in the position of having to argue what might otherwise be seen as a pure policy or legal position, because we know that the consequences are that if they implement what they want to do, it's going to actually have technical effects deeper in the stack. So so what this really adds up to is an endorsement, I think, of Ted's comment about interpreting the remit here generously and and also Pepper's comments.
Thank you, Mike. Andrew, please.
Okay, next slide, please. Actually, I think it's two more. Yeah, next, there we are. The original Open Standards Everywhere, this is an interesting project. The the genesis of this was that the Internet society needed to refresh its web servers. And and we looked at it and we said, this actually turns out not to be that easy anymore for people who are also trying to do, who are also concerned about, you know, conformance to to open standards and so on. And so we we took our our opportunity, our the thing that we needed to do as an opportunity to document what we were doing and and build it and so on. And so there's this major deliverable around documentation that was in a finished state. But it turned out also that even cheaper than we expected, and we expected it to be cheap. So it's really worked out very well, and we've had quite a lot of of good success with this. It turns out also that there are toolkits in the world that are good at testing these kinds of things for web servers and so on. So we expanded on the scope of this to include some hosted system cases in order to explain that to people. We did a lot of training with with chapters. And and the technical compliance as a result of this training was really tremendous. So the Kolkata chapter, for instance, went from a 32% conformance to 100% on their on their web presence. Just, you know, in in the immediate aftermath of the of the training. So we're really having success at getting people to think about this stuff, which makes their systems more portable, right? That's the the goal here is not, oh, standards are good. The goal there is to say, does it work better? And the reason the Internet way of networking, for instance, depends on standards is because that way you've got the ability, you know, to to be flexible in the way that the Internet be. So that's 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 the way that this project is is going ahead. It's it's in very good shape. Next, please. The the last of these projects is running a little behind, in part because it was scheduled mostly later in the year. It the early scheduling was mostly taken up with NDSS and time security was coming later in the year. But there is an external advisory group that's already been established, and there's been a kickoff meeting and so on. This is a relatively small project, but it's critical, right? The the idea here is like many of the other low level things that nobody's interested in. You know, DNS falls into this, all of these low level pieces. It turns out that things are really dependent on good time. And if you don't secure it, then it becomes a new vector for attack. And I I don't think it's news to anybody who's in this meeting that attacks on the Internet are getting more pervasive all the time. So this is an area where we're focusing. I think this is a good example of a thing that we don't believe there would emerge a natural market solution for this. And so it seems like something that, you know, it's a technical Internet society needs to contribute to directly. Next, please. There are some other sort of activities that have to do with kind of outward facing things as well that are not projects. These are the, you know, sort of longstanding kinds of stuff, and I want to mention a few of them as well. Next, please. So we have a lot of work that's been going on around community. This has been a theme that we've been talking about. There has already been some improved attention to individual members this year. Of course, we've got some more stuff coming up to do there. We've got good engagement and growth in the organizational members. And in particular, I want to highlight that this, Kristel already mentioned it, but this is the first contested OMAC chair election in some time. And so that's a that's a good sign from my point of view. We do have some real good engagement and activity in the chapters community. We've had 80 chapters applied for and qualified for the admin fund support. We've had different training programs with various projects, you know, 400 trainees. We've had really positive feedback. We've also started working on the SIG Strategy Working Group. SIG, you may recall, have created sometimes some some difficulties because we treat them like they're chapters, but they don't have the how is that to be to work very well? And so there's some question about how we're going to how we're going to solve that. And that working group has started to try to help with that. There's also, I want to, I want to call out, there's been some significant effort already, and it's ongoing from our Collaborative Systems Group to get improved requirements for the association management system. So so Member Nova, we only rolled it out, you know, a couple of years ago. It has been very, very bumpy. We've had a lot of complaints about it, and we understand that. So we're attempting to address that on two fronts. Some, we're trying to do some improvements in the near term, but also we're trying to understand what we missed in the original requirements, because that might tell us that actually some of these requirements are never going to be met by this system. I don't know yet. And so we're going to have, you know, we're waiting for those requirements to come in. But already we've made quite a bit of progress. So I know that a lot of people in the community are exercised about this, and I want to highlight that it's 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 going on. Next, please. External engagement is the part of the organization where we talk to organizations that are not part of our direct community. So governments and international organizations and so on, partnership. And this is an area where we're having quite a bit of 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 progress. There have been three additional new partnerships that have have been signed. Some of them are significant. You've seen the you've seen the notices about it. We've had good luck with the ITF Policy Fellowship. There's also been a redesign of the Postel Award process. The recipient has already been selected, but of course, it's still a secret because we haven't announced it yet. We've also hired a director of partnerships, so you will see some more activity in this area. Next, please. We've also got a totally refreshed department to address training needs. You'll remember, those of you who are on the on the board at the time, we had a look at our training last year and came to the conclusion that there were a number of gaps in the way that we were approaching this. So there's a completely new strategy. We've hired somebody looking after this, and we already started to see the rewards coming from this. On the Internet Governance Course was redesigned. There was a lot of help that came from Rhonda delivering the chapter training efforts that were already mentioned before. So we we're really starting to see some benefit here. But I I think it's probably not as visible to you yet as it will be as the year goes on. Next, please. So that covers all of the stuff that I wanted to talk about in the action plan. I don't know if there are further questions apart from the ones that we already discussed. But if not, I'll stop talking and you can work. Only 10 minutes overdue now, so I tried to I tried to get it all in.
Yeah, that was great. Thank you, Andrew. Any further questions for Andrew? So usually we have the the CEO report in in one go, in one block, but this time we had to split it. So Andrew will will continue talking tomorrow. So, you know, if you want to think a bit, you know, sleep on it and then ask questions tomorrow, you can also do that. Okay, I don't see any more questions. Okay, thanks a lot, Andrew. So at this point, for for people following us or watching on YouTube in the future, we're gonna we're gonna stop now the the open to observer session. We're going to have an executive session with James. I see he just joined. He will give us a communication update. And then tomorrow we will start again or resume in executive session at 2 UTC. And we will start in open to observer session at 3 UTC. So if someone wants to continue watching, please join at 3 UTC. And with that, Kevin, you you may stop recording at this point, or you have a question?
I have a question for you. We have a couple of senior staff with us. Are they permitted to stay for this?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
But we don't need to record that.